It may actually save my life. Yeah, okay. Hugs, good vibes. I'm just gonna try and keep smiling and love you guys.
White lie details Katie's fragile mental state, elevating this small-scale personal story into a universal one.
Oh, it's about to start. You ready?
Ready.
Popcorn?
Butter.
Nachos?
Cheese.
Fruit beer with red liquor straw?
Right here. Maybe it's time we made our new movie.
Good idea, Scoob. But first, we need a trailer. Oh, can you do the trailer guy voice?
Well, let me give it a shot. In a world destroyed by evil, discover the epic origin story of the greatest team of heroes in the history of mystery.
Nailed it!
It's really cool to see the backstory and how their friendship began.
I'm Fred. This is Velma.
Hi.
And that's Daphne.
Hey.
I'm Shaggy. And this is Scooby-Doo.
Nice to meet you.
It's all fun and games until they've really got to get down and dirty with these mysteries.
Trick or treat!
We get to see a little boy meet a homeless puppy and come together to form the most dynamic duo in animated history.
Hey! This mangy stray's coming with me.
He's not a stray.
Okay, then. What's his name?
His name's Scooby.
Middle name?
Dooby.
Last name?
Do.
As a Scoob fan, I'm excited to see it. I'm excited to share it with the world. I think that people are really gonna like it. We need Scooby.
You might want to buckle up.
Scooby-Doo-Bee-Doo.
Maybe this can lead us to our culprit.
Jinkies!
Apparently, he's been stealing Netflix by using his mother's account.
That is not fair for the rest of us who have to pay for Netflix.
You have to pay for Netflix?
Here we go!
If you want, you can pull over and drop us off here.
We'll walk home.
I guess our new movie is an origin story.
Every hero should have one.
I want The Rock to play me.
Never gonna happen.
Canada. Start your engines. We're looking for Canada's first drag superstar.
I'm so excited!
Wow. This was such a surf. This competition just turned up.
Serving body, giving pace. Watch out, Canada. I'm here to win this race.
I'm about to make these girls feel real bitter.
Bulby Crown, the queen of the north. Oud Chow. We're about to find Oud.
Where's everyone going?
Wouldn't be everybody. Just be the two of us.
He's a kid. What's wrong with you?
Nothing actually happened.
I could never believe that my daughter was capable of such terrible crimes.
If Barb collects all the strings, our music will be destroyed forever. We need to go undercover.
With fashion! Let's go save the world!
All the love that's in this room needs to spread out to the rest of this fragile planet.
We're coming back on the air after an interruption due to a technical problem.
You want to see something cool? It plays rough and it plays smart.
Devastating but grotesque and amazing.
What is this movie telling me?
George J. Romero wrote The Zombie Bible.
There could be 50 million of those things out there.
I get something different out of it every time. This whole idea of the young eating the older generation.
Subliminal panic.
One of the key performances of the 1960s.
If you stay up here, you take orders from me!
I wish I was there.
This guy knows he could toy with an audience.
When you ask a kid what a zombie is, it's a George Romero zombie. We didn't have a budget for it.
People were asking for my autograph. Like, what?
They're coming to get you, Barbara.
We made the best film we could. The fans made it a classic.
Coming up on Your World this week.
There are a lot of bad people in the world. And Charlie Manks is one of them. Charlie Manks broke her, and so she can't really be a completely present mother. She can't give up alcohol. She feels like she's damaged. What Night Living Dead really did was modernize horror.
There could be 50 million of those things out there. That's how much good these windows are.
This season is bigger and bolder, angstier. Sorry about your dad. Sorry about you.
They bicker and fight.
Ooh, I'm gonna tell daddy what you said.
Jesse, I take it back!
But at the end of the day, they are there for each other when their backs are up against the wall.
Get in. I love you guys.
I've made a lot of terrible mistakes in my life. And shacking up with you was just not one of them.
Mom, who's Charlie Manks?
What'd you just say?
Charlie Manks. He's on the TV.
I'm the one who's supposed to kill him.
Season two of Nosferatu begins eight years later. Vic McQueen tries to move on with her life, but ghosts of her past are inescapable.
What's great about the eight-year time jump is it allows us to pick our characters up in a different space, to reinvent them in a way. We're picking up damaged adults trying to kind of find their way through after an encounter with Charlie Manks, as opposed to bright-eyed, bushy-tailed teenagers who we had last season. Season two, Vic, you meet her shackled up with Lou and a double-wide and gun barrel Colorado. She has this beautiful young boy, Bruce Wayne McQueen. There are a lot of bad people in the world. And Charlie Manks is one of them. Charlie Manks broke her, and so she can't really be a completely present mother. She can't give up alcohol. She feels like she's damaged.
Now, how did a nerd like me get so lucky? Eight years later, Lou is still in awe that Vic would even kind of look his way, yet he's in a relationship with her.
Why did you need to believe that he was alive so badly?
He wants to keep this family together, and he's willing to overlook things. Let's go, movies. Always helps you forget. We can start putting it behind us.
I just need to clear my head, you know?
There are issues that aren't being dealt with.
She has to heal those inner wounds that existed before Charlie Manks.
Is Charlie Manks dead? Fans and critics are questioning if such an evil like that ever truly goes away.
He knows where we are, Vic.
I'm gonna kill him once and for all.
It's time for you to close your eyes and dream of...
Christmas land.
Sink your teeth into Nosferatu, Sundays at 10 a.m. Eastern on AMC. To enjoy AMC programs, go to rogers.com/channels for details on how to order.
Government spokesman warned that dead bodies will continue to be transformed into the flesh-eating ghouls.
I think there's a lot of Night of the Living Dead that is completely timeless and not just about how it looks, or how it feels, or how the actors act. I just think that the actual threat will never, ever stop being scary.
In Hollywood Suite's new documentary, Raising the Dead: Reexamining Night of the Living Dead, film experts along with original cast and crew explain how George J. Romero's 1968 classic changed film forever.
What Night Living Dead really did was modernize horror. It made horror about everyday people, something in a real-life situation that could happen to you. And I think that's what made it so incredibly terrifying.
There could be 50 million of those things out there. That's how much good these windows are.
With a tiny budget and a cast of unknown actors, nobody could have predicted Night of the Living Dead would revolutionize the entire genre of horror movies.
I had no idea that it was going to become what it has. I don't think anyone did. I can't even believe that I was chosen for that role.
We never anticipated it being anything more than a black-and-white drive-in movie. I've grown to learn how to appreciate and understand how it did change people's lives. Romero was among the first people to imagine the zombies as creatures who came alive and were hungry for human flesh.
Even outside of zombies, it really became a trend, this idea of infection and...
Hit set!
Thank you. Merci. So a few reminders for today's meeting, which is being held using Zoom. Members of council and staff, please keep your microphones on mute at all times unless called upon to speak. Members of council, please use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of the participants' list in Zoom. Star nine for members on the phone. And this meeting will be broadcast on Rogers TV. Members and staff are asked to position their cameras so that their faces are as close to the top of the frame as possible, minimizing the amount of open space above your head. And phone in participants, please do not put the phone on hold. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseil Lulov.
Present.
Counselor Dudas. Counselor Harder.
Here.
Counselor Suds.
Here.
Counselor Elshantiri.
Present.
Counselor Gaur.
Present.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli.
Here.
Counselor Egli. Counselor Deans. Counselor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
You see.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor McKenny.
Present.
Counselor Leeper.
Here.
Counselor Brockington.
Here.
Counselor Menard.
Present.
Conseil Clucci.
Present.
Counselor DeRus.
Here.
Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Mihen.
Here.
Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Do we have Counselor Egli? Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. I think I'm looking at a younger version of Scott Moffett. I almost didn't recognize him there. Well, good morning. Excuse me. Confirmation of minutes, adoption de process verbe pour le 24 juin. Carried?
Carried.
Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflit d'intérêt. Counselor Shirelli, do you have a conflict?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Read the city council disposition. Thirty-sixth of the 24th of June 2020. The council motioned to suspend the rules of procedure in order to permit the integrity commissioner to report to council in advance of the summer legislative break, whereas subsection 5.3 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act provides that where the interests of a member has not been disclosed by reason of a member's absence from a meeting at which the matter is considered, the member shall disclose the interest at the first meeting of council attended by the member. I, Counselor Rick Shirelli, declare a direct pecuniary interest in the following matter considered by council: the motion to suspend the rules of procedure in order to permit the integrity commissioner to report to council in advance of the summer legislative break considered by council on June 24, 2020. And regarding City Council Agenda 37 of the 15th of July, council item to receive the report from the Integrity Commissioner report to council on inquiry respecting the conduct of Counselor Shirelli and the in-camera meeting concerning workplace investigation, whereas subsection 5.1 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act states that where a member, either on his or her own behalf or while acting for or by, with or through another, has any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in any matter and is present at a meeting of council or board at which the matter is subject of consideration, the member shall prior to consideration of the matter at the meeting disclose the interest in a general nature thereof. I, Counselor Rick Shirelli, declare a direct pecuniary interest in the following matters to be considered by council on the 15th of July 2020. A. The motion to receive reports. Number one, report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of Counselor Shirelli. And B. The in-camera meeting concerning workplace investigation. Note, I have initiated a court challenge, and I have received confirmation that divisional court will be scheduling a case conference to set a timetable for exchange of materials and to schedule a hearing date. In light of this legal challenge, I've been advised to say nothing further in relation to the integrity commissioner report.
Any other conflicts of interest? Communications as presented, regrets. Counselor Deens advised she'd be absent from the city council meeting of the 15th of July 2020. Motion introduced reports. Motion important presentation de rapport. Counselor Dudas, please. Second to my Counselor Elshantiri.
There's a report from the integrity commissioner entitled "Report to Council on Inquiry Respecting the Conduct of Counselor Shirelli." The report from Ottawa Public Health and the Emergency and Protective Services Department entitled "Temporary Mandatory Mask Bylaw for Enclosed Public Spaces in the City of Ottawa." The report from the Finance Services Department entitled "Public-Pprivate Partnership Ottawa to Community ICE Partners," Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 14, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 11, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 15, Planning Committee Reports 26 and 27, and the reports from the city clerk entitled "Board 19 Cumberland Vacancy Auctions July 15", and a summary of oral and written public submissions for items subject to the Planning Act explanation requirements at the city council meeting of June 24, 2020, be received and considered.
Okay, on the motion. Carried?
Carried. Carried. Mr. Mayor, can you please hold those two inquiries?
Sorry?
Can you please hold those two inquiries under the communications item?
Which ones?
Both of them.
The committee appointments and public process. Okay. We need three-quarters support to deal with them, so we'll come back to that. Okay, so how we're going to proceed, colleagues, is we're going to deal with our COVID updates first. Then we will go and deal with the consent agenda, those items that we can pass without holding the item. Then we'll deal with the integrity commissioner's report in camera, then report out. Then we'll deal with RTG legal update in camera, and then report out, and then deal with the rest of the items that have been held. So... And the city clerk wanted to offer a comment. Mr. O'Connor, please. And Counselor Egli is having technical difficulties, I'm told, so hopefully he'll be with us soon.
I'm here now, Jim.
Okay, great. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, then I'm good, thank you.
Sorry, nothing to say, Mr. Clerk?
Just to advise about Counselor Egli, but he's with us. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Although we've been fighting COVID-19 for over four months now, I was very pleased with Premier Ford's announcement that our city will be moving into stage three of reopening this Friday. This announcement is very good news for our local economy, for our community, and residents and visitors to the nation's capital. The increase in the size of gatherings from 10 to 50 inside and 100 outside is also good news for those larger families who will now be able to get all together to share a meal with their loved ones. But although this is a very positive announcement, I encourage everyone to take the next several steps with caution. We've had to adjust the way we live since the middle of March, and this adjustment has been difficult for many people. So I can understand the desire for people to get out, see their family and friends, and enjoy the rest of the summer. But COVID-19 is still in our community, and we can't let our guard down now. We've been able to get through the difficult past four months by working together as a community.
And it's by working together that we went through the last four months that were very difficult for very many people.
Tightened sense of community has brought out the best in many. It's heartwarming to think of the countless acts of kindness and generosity we have witnessed over the past few months, and these acts of kindness continue to occur on a daily basis. Just think of the very generous $500 tip that was left on a $64 bill at the Wellington diner on Monday, along with a gift of $1,000 for its owner, Jeff Frost. And what a wonderfully thoughtful gift to leave for a server and a small business owner who have been hurting, obviously, for months. I'm always proud to be the mayor of our great city, but never more than I have been, excuse me, in recent months. There is an air of optimism on our streets and on our residents' faces.
We must respect the rules if we want to avoid a second wave.
Caution, vigilance, and compliance to public health guidelines in the coming months so we can avoid a second wave that would once again bring our economy to a standstill. We've all seen what's going on in the United States, south of the border. We don't want and can't afford for this to happen here in Ottawa. Thankfully, that kind of resurgence and spike is totally avoidable if we continue to be smart and responsible. Last week, Ottawa Public Health and three other neighboring health units made face masks mandatory in enclosed public spaces. As our medical officer of health, Dr. Etchus, noted, the evolving scientific evidence indicates that wearing a mask can help reduce the transmission of COVID-19.
Yes, wearing a mask can limit the transmission of the virus.
Virus, thereby protecting people around you. And this is important because some individuals can be infected by COVID-19 and not know it because they're asymptomatic. Today, we are bringing forward a motion to institute a bylaw to ensure that residents of Ottawa indeed wear a mask in enclosed public spaces. But even with this bylaw, it is still critical that we continue to practice physical distancing, regular hand washing, and isolating yourself when you're feeling sick. We're trending in the right direction, and we must practice all required public health measures if we want to stay this way.
We must all do our share to stay safe.
Relatively low and stable, but we can't get complacent, particularly as we reopen some of our facilities and services and move to stage three of our economic recovery. But I do want to thank all of our residents and businesses for their cooperation. Your respect to public health measures is what has gotten us to this stage. Ottawa Public Health's website, ottawapublichealth.ca, features a vendor list where residents can purchase cloth masks. We also understand that not everyone has access to a mask. That's why United Way has worked with Ottawa Public Health to launch the Facing Forward campaign to help supply cloth masks to residents in need, such as isolated seniors and the homeless community. In addition, as part of this campaign, the United Way will be selling reusable cloth masks at a number of OC transport stations during this week and during the morning rush hour from 6 a.m. to 9 a.m. When you purchase a mask at one of the OC transport stations, the United Way will use the proceeds to purchase masks for those in our community who can't easily access one. Another option for residents who do not have the means to purchase a cloth mask is to contact the city's Human Needs Task Force at 613-580-2424, extension 26753. That's 613-580-2424, extension 26753, or by email at hntf@ottawa.ca. That's hntf@ottawa.ca.
The resident can call social services at the city to obtain a mask.
In need for cloth masks, and the Human Needs Task Force is looking for donations to distribute to vulnerable residents in the community. To make a cloth mask donation, you can email donations@ottawa.ca to set up an appointment for a drop-off. I also want to take an opportunity to spend a few moments to talk about our local economy. I know the last four months have been quite difficult for our local business owners, and I want to thank them for their resilience and willingness to adopt through these very challenging times. Working with our Economic Partners Task Force, with our colleagues Counselors Elshantiri and Dudas, over the last four months, we have rolled out many initiatives to support small businesses across the city. Earlier this month, we worked with Ottawa Tourism to launch the Rural Cycling and Tourism Campaign. As many residents are opting for staycations this year, we want to encourage them to get out and rediscover the beauty and charm of our four rural wards while safely supporting their businesses and restaurants. Included in the campaign are self-guided cycling routes, sample day itineraries, and a photo contest for each ward. I encourage everyone to go to Ottawa Tourism's website or their Instagram page to learn more and plan a fun day exploring rural Ottawa this summer.
I encourage everyone to leave downtown this summer and visit our rural areas and use their restaurants.
Also wanted to mention that our five fantastic rural fairs, which unfortunately have all had to be canceled this year: the Capital Fair, the Carp Fair, the Metcalf Fair, the Richmond Fair, and the Navin Fair. These fairs are major community events in form, part of the DNA of rural Ottawa, but we know they're facing a tough year. Given their importance and ongoing contributions to agricultural societies, the city's Rural Affairs Office will be providing each fair with a one-time $15,000 grant to lend a hand in this time of need. This is similar to us providing the funding for festivals that were not able to take place throughout mostly the downtown area. I want to thank our rural councillors for their advocacy and support of this initiative, and I very much look forward to seeing our rural fairs back next year, bigger and better than ever. As part of the province's stage-three announcement, we heard earlier this week that dine-in restaurants will be allowed to open, and that's great news for them. I also want to recognize the work of many local restaurants that have been offering patio service, curbside delivery, and pickup. Our patio team has been very busy helping businesses find patios and café seating opportunities, both on private property and in the city right-ofways. Thanks to the rule changes approved by council, so far this year, staff estimate that approximately 350 patios and cafés have sprung up across the city, which is roughly 260 more than last year. We've also had seven road closures in place for the purpose of expanding patios, and they're providing approximately 500 paying seats to those benefiting restaurants and their happy customers. I want to congratulate our city staff, who deserve the credit, for their great work that's really helping businesses make it through the summer.
Thank you to all the devoted staff that made these patios possible.
The opening of the economy will bring new challenges for our community and for our businesses, and the city is working to find solutions. In May, we challenged the business community to submit proposals to the recovery stream of our innovation pilot project to help the city and businesses adapt and reopen safely as the economy opens. And the innovation pilot program was shepherded by councilors Hubley and Tierney, and we thank them for that initiative a few years ago. So the evaluation committee received and considered 47 applications, and I'm pleased to announce that we have selected five innovative pilot projects to provide technology solutions in support of Ottawa's economic recovery. The city of Ottawa and some local businesses will pilot the technologies from mid-July until February 2021. I'd like to share a little bit of information about the five pilot projects. Ottawa-based startup Agile Work Evolutions will work with the city's Innovation Client Services Department to pilot their workforce analytics software to better understand how employees prefer to work and how they're enabled to work. Local software company InItLive will work with the Manor Park Community Council and Counselor Kingsward to pilot software that will help them cope with increased demand for nonprofit services that depend on volunteers in order to better meet the needs of vulnerable residents. This includes deliveries from food banks, including the Rito Rockliff Community Resource Centre, Partage Vagnier, and the Kanada Food Curb. Gatno-based Macadamian will work with Churro Max of Manatic to pilot their virtual waiting room, which ensures the patients practice physical distancing while they are waiting for their appointment outside the premises. Q Reserve will work with Ottawa Markets to pilot a density management solution that will use sensors to track occupancy and patterns of guests in the Byward Market building to ensure everyone is physical distancing. And finally, Social Distencer Technologies will partner with the city and local museums to reopen the cultural sector and public markets using a wireless, wearable device that provides visual, audible, and vibration warnings when two devices are more than two meters apart. This device will make physical distancing guidelines easy to practice at the Billings State National Historic Site. State National Historic Site, in councillor Clutsey's ward, the Cumberland Heritage Museum, and the Deefen Bunker in councillor Elshanti Rian's ward. These are all exciting and valuable technologies to be piloted in this pandemic context to keep people safe and help our economy bounce back from the impacts of COVID-19, and I encourage you to visit ottawa.ca for more information. You'll remember that in late May, we launched our Business Reopening Toolkit to help businesses reopen safely, and it was well-received and widely distributed amongst the business community. Just yesterday, I had a conference call with 25 CEOs and presidents of some of the larger businesses to find out how they're doing, and many of them do appreciate the Building Reopening Toolkit. We spent a lot of time with the small and medium-sized business with their economic task force, and yesterday was an opportunity to check in with the bigger companies that have in many instances hundreds of thousands of employees to see how they're doing. I'm happy to report that the Toolkit webpage has been viewed more than 12,000 times, and the Toolkit itself was downloaded more than 1,100 times.
Major success for our economic development team.
Ahead to Stage Three on Friday, I encourage all businesses who have not done so to visit ottawa.ca/businesstoolkit to get the latest information, guidelines, and downloadable signage to ensure a safe and successful reopening. I noticed, for instance, when councillor Kavanaugh and I were on a bike tour of Bay Ward, almost all of the restaurants and shops that we went into had the official signage from Public Health, so people are downloading the information and placing it on their windows, encouraging people to wear a mask. I also want to give an update on the Buy Local campaign, which we launched in the early weeks of the pandemic.
We've taken several measures for the survival of our local businesses here in Ottawa.
Residents to support local businesses by purchasing gift cards online and ordering takeout or delivery from restaurants. The campaign generated 13 million impressions and more than 60,000 visits to ottawa.ca/bilocal, where residents could connect to Ottawa BIAs and business associations to learn which retailers and restaurants were serving customers online. The second phase of the campaign launched last week and focuses on the economic recovery. It encourages restaurants to safely get out, experience our city, and support their neighborhood stores and restaurants. If you see one of the campaign videos on social media, please share it widely to help inspire residents to continue supporting local businesses in the community. Remember to use the hashtag MyOttawa, ou mon Ottawa? I want to close today with some exciting news about progress we have made on our anti-racism secretariat proposed by councillor King. In our 2020 budget, as you recall, the City of Ottawa committed funding for a full-time anti-racism specialist position and the development of a corporate anti-racism strategy. The work of the secretariat will add an anti-racism lens to the city's strategic plan and policies, and it will build upon previous work done to address racial inequality and systemic racism. As you know, at its meeting on July 10, city council approved the nomination of councillor King as the council liaison for anti-racism and ethno-cultural relations for the 2018-2022 term of council. Today, I'm pleased to announce that the recruitment for the anti-racism specialist has been completed and that Yousra Osman has joined our team. Ms. Osman is a Black Canadian anti-racist educator, registered social worker, mental health councillor and researcher, and she holds a Masters of Social Work degree from what I consider the best university in Canada, Carleton University. Her work in Ottawa begins with a deep recognition of Algonquin and Eshnabe presence and nationhood and the important solidarity between Indigenous and other racialized communities. Her experience includes working as a frontline social worker and councillor, and she led community-based research on anti-racism and trauma-informed practice in various communities. She also designed and delivers the advanced top-rated course, Racialization and Social Work, in Carleton University's School of Social Work. Ms. Osman is an experienced trainer on anti-racism frontline work, anti-Black racism, and Black community health. We're thrilled to have Ms. Osman on our team, and we look forward to collaborating with her on this important issue together with councillor King.
Please join me to welcome Lucera within our team at the City of Ottawa.
Today, that the City of Ottawa will be partnering with the United Ways United For All Coalition to host an online public listening forum on July 28 from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The forum will give space for Black, Indigenous, and racialized residents to share information on their lived experiences, as well as ideas and suggestions for ways we can collectively address systemic racism in our community. Registration details will be available on engage.ottawa.ca or by emailing antiracismsecretariat@antiracism@ottawa.ca.
I hope there'll be a new, great level of participation.
But take this opportunity to offer my condolences to the family and friends of our longtime city colleague Lynne Kennedy. Many of you would know Lynne from her work supporting the Ottawa Police Services Board for many years. Lynne suffered from a rare neurological disease known as transverse myelitis, and on June 30th, she passed away with the medical assistance of doctors. Lynne was known around city hall for her kind heart and warm smile. In a final act that exemplifies this, Lynne donated her spinal cord to researchers at Harvard University in the hopes that they will be able to learn more about the disease and help others who suffer from this rare condition. On behalf of all of city council, I offer our heartfelt condolences to the family and coworkers of Lynne. Lynne, it was a true privilege to know you and to see your smiling face just down the hall from my office each and every day for many, many years. As this is our last meeting before the summer break, I want to thank everyone for coming together these last few months to get through this very challenging and difficult time. I know it hasn't been easy for many people, particularly are vulnerable. But we've come together, worked collaboratively, and we'll come out of this even stronger. I'm certainly hopeful for a calmer and more normal second half of 2020, and I look forward to continuing to move our city forward in the coming months. I hope everyone has a safe, healthy, and enjoyable summer.
Hopefully, you'll have a restful summer.
Over to the Chair of Ottawa Public Health, councillor Egley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize earlier for the connectivity issues, but we're all good now. Good morning, everyone. Even though Canada Day has recently passed, I still believe that there is cause for celebration in our city. As a community, we should celebrate how far we have come and how hard we have worked at collectively fighting COVID-19. I'm proud of how our community has stepped up and put others first time and time again during this pandemic. Mask use is another great example of how we are able to come together as a city and do what's right. I want to thank the residents of Ottawa for their cooperation with and support of the mask-related measures that we have recently employed. In response to Phase Three's increasing freedom of movement and increased contact with other individuals and the reopening of many businesses, we had to develop measures in order to ensure that people remain safe. Masks are an integral part of these measures, but I want to urge residents to not forget all the other key public health measures. Physical distancing, hand hygiene, staying home if sick are behaviors that are instrumental to our success at fighting this virus. Overall, as a member of this community, I owe you thanks for how you have taken these measures and embraced them. Residents of Ottawa truly demonstrated how much they care about each other's health and happiness, and they're very cognizant that COVID is still out there and this is how we're holding it off and how we're keeping the curve flat. I'm also proud of how kind and understanding members of our public have been towards people who are unable to wear a mask. I thank you for echoing our prioritization of education and conversation over judgment and enforcement. Unfortunately, there will be limited occasions where formal enforcement will be necessary, but if the last few days are any indication, these will be few and far between. Furthermore, I want to reiterate that the bylaw that we are going to be considering this morning, or perhaps this afternoon, depending on how the agenda goes, is reviewable, and although we cannot predict its duration, I can assure everyone that is not open-ended and will be continuously assessed. Enforcement will also be reasonable and education and warning-oriented, as opposed to enforcement and fining. Ottawa, you have resoundingly demonstrated that you care about your fellow community members and are willing to do what is necessary to save lives. In particular, I want to thank our local businesses for their support and quick adaptation to our policies. Thank you.
Great, thank you. councillor, Dr. Etches, please. Do we need to push mute?
Yes, thank you, I'm here. Good morning, everyone. Bonjour, coups. I do have a PowerPoint presentation which I'll take us through. So, starting on the second slide regarding the current situation in Ottawa. So, our case counts are stable, as the mayor had suggested. What I'll add is that over the last two weeks, 42% of the cases we found outside of institutions are still not linked to any other case or travel or exposure that is known. So that tells us that we still have community transmission happening in our community. The hospitalizations are decreased, and the outbreaks are at a much, much lower level, but they are still occurring. So because the virus is in our community, it is still being introduced into institutions, and this is a challenge with the nature of the virus, the asymptomatic infections that can exist. We are managing our case and contact practices, and the testing volumes are steady. We have been working with our hospital partners to add hours to the assessment centers to tackle those wait times that we have been seen, and we are increasingly using mobile service. I can speak to that a bit more later. So, la situation est stable.
Situation is stable.
Learning to live with COVID. This is how I'm thinking about it now, that we need to approach the next year, maybe two years, having this virus in our community and adapting and becoming better able to go back to work, go back to school, go about our businesses that we need in a way that still decreases the risk of transmission of COVID-19.
We need to learn how to live with COVID-19.
To making statements about the readiness we see to go into Stage Three, but the need to do things differently, that some of the activities that are allowed are higher risk, there is no question, and so we need to use that approach of assessing our own personal risk and making informed decisions, try to choose the lower-risk activities as much as possible. So that means outdoors, limiting our contacts, keeping our distance from each other, and if we're indoors, wearing a mask. I'm sure we'll talk more about that, too. So what we are doing in terms of monitoring and trying to get on top of any resurgence as quickly as possible is really a leading practice in the province. We have done some coding to be able to detect clusters of cases in space and time, and this is done, run, this detection system is run daily, and it allows us to pick up even a cluster of two cases that are beyond what we would expect if cases were randomly distributed in space and time. And so we have detected some of these clusters, and then we're moving with our healthcare partners again who run the testing system to be able to get mobile testing out into those areas. These clusters would be of cases where they're linked in time or space, and there isn't otherwise a known link between a case and a contact or an institution or a workplace of exposure. So this other point on the slide about learning to live with COVID is that we need to support each other and people who have greater risk and people who have less advantage and aren't able to self-isolate, you know, to keep the support in place for housing, for people to be able to be off work if they are sick. Some of these are policy changes that we need to address over the longer run so that we can have a community that supports people to do their part to prevent COVID transmission. The last point is, we're planning ahead under the possibility of different scenarios, and so I'll come to that, what we might expect over the coming year plus. First, on slide four, I want to thank the New York Times for their good work describing the pandemic across the world, and this slide is about the picture of resurgence that is occurring as various states in the United States open up their activities in business and going back to more activities. So I think the overall trend you can see is that there is a rise in cases in the majority of the states, and sometimes that rise in cases exceeds the initial case volume, you know, that we're seeing. And so you can see the flattening of the curve, the actions that people take make a big difference. And as we go back to more activities, we need to think about keeping up those key practices like physical distancing and adding in as much protection as we can. Because the virus is there, it can double very quickly, and so, you know, all credit to the people of Ottawa, as the Chair and our mayor have said. On the next slide, slide five, this is what we're hoping for. This is the best-case scenario, is that we keep the transmission of COVID-19 manageable, manageable for our healthcare system, manageable for businesses that need to continue operating, for people who need to be working. It does require that we maintain that physical distancing as much as possible and limit our contact, but if we go through this period of reopening and things stay manageable, like they did through Stage Two, we may be able to continue progressively widening our social circles, for instance, or taking a look at being able to increase the size of gatherings and relaxing other restrictions and limits. On slide six, it could well be a different scenario, is that we have larger increases in cases that continue on a regular basis, that continue of having to intervene and apply a more strict control, going back to fewer people in our social circles, that kind of thing. I don't think anyone expects that people can go back to shutting everything down like happened in March. And so, again, as we learn to live with COVID, we have to figure out what are those measures that are reasonable and feasible for us to be able to adapt and address rises in cases if that occurs. So, you know, part of this is definitely about early detection, intervening, but it certainly is our individual behavior that has made the difference so far, and we'll need to figure out how to, you know, use that to control any resurgence. The last scenario unfortunately is a large resurgence in cases that could come as there's more contact between individuals. This is what we are seeing in other countries, and so, you know, I think that we have to prepare for the worst as well, and that's what, you know, healthcare systems have been using this time, a public health system to do, to build up our capacity to handle more cases. And this may require, again, re-emphasizing the good practices of physical distancing, wearing a mask indoors, as well as potentially going back to limiting contact. So all of these scenarios require attention to people who need more support and this COVID-wise approach that we've been seeing. So I will just speak a little bit more about masks because of the item before us today. And to say that, the rationale's been touched on by others, but this is a recommendation that is based in evidence. We can look to the evidence compiled by the World Health Organization, the CDC, Public Health Agency of Canada. It comes from many different sources and has been growing over the course of the pandemic. So we have information about the physics, you know, and the engineering and the laboratory studies that talk about how masks of different types block respiratory secretions. Important because not everyone always knows that they're sick and stays home. I've seen the analogy that previously when we were all at home, it was like the house was our mask, blocking our respiratory secretions from getting out to others. And now we're going out, so we need a mask to continue to keep those respiratory secretions to ourselves. You know, the evidence then has included modeling. It's gone on to look at the population level impact, if everyone, you know, possible does their part to wear a mask. And it includes looking at jurisdictions where masks have been used, and the weight of the evidence is strong. It would actually be unethical at this point to try to do a randomized controlled trial where some population had masks and some didn't and see what happens. That just wouldn't be ethical because we know that it can make a difference in decreasing transmission of COVID. What's important is public readiness and buy-in when you're going to make something mandatory. So I completely understand, I agree, that the word mandatory feels heavy, and it's not a step that we're promoting and supporting lightly. This is because we need to protect the health of our population, and we did start with policy. And we did start with voluntary methods and we didn't quite get there. People did a really good job, but we've seen over the time since my stronger instruction that businesses require this practice, that people are doing an even better job. And I want to thank businesses and thank people for this. So, again, this is now something people have access to, understand how to use masks safely, making sure they wash their hands, they keep their masks in a bag when they take them off. And, you know, there's a lot of practices that people have been learning and always want to support that good practice by information on our website. So, I encourage people to check out our website for more detail. At this point, I'm on slide nine and I'm going to pass the mute button, I guess, over to Mr. Anthony Demonte to describe the bylaw that is being introduced in a joint manner from Ottawa Public Health and Bylaw and Regulatory Services.
Thank you very much, Dr. Etches, and good morning, everyone. As Dr. Etches has explained to us, the journey we've all been on with this pro-pandemic and how successful we've been in Ottawa, the next recommendation that she's provided to us is we should be going to the next step to have a mandatory mask bylaw, or mandatory mask. And so, this bylaw has been developed in order to support that public health and policy objective that if council approves today. So, I'm on slide 10 now. And as we can see, the bylaw mirrors what Dr. Etches has been telling us. First and foremost, the requirement is to each and every one of us to participate and wear a mask to protect our loved ones, families, and people around us. So, the first requirement of the bylaw indicates that everyone that's in an enclosed public space must wear a mask that covers their mouth, chin, and nose. As well, we have a balanced approach here. The operators of these enclosed public spaces have requirements. And as Dr. Etches mentioned, we're starting to see, or rather than mayor mentioned, we're starting to see signage now going up that notifies patrons as they enter the enclosed spaces that they should be wearing a mask. As well, we've added an additional responsibility. If someone's forgetting or doesn't see the sign and enters and forgets to put their mask on, the operator should advise them verbally. That's as far as we're going. We do not want to see confrontations with operators. We don't want to burden them with that responsibility any further. We saw confrontations particularly in the United States where things get out of hand. I think this is an individual responsibility. The operators have a role as well, too. As well, public health is recommending that all these enclosed spaces, the operator also requires to have alcohol-based hand rubs at both the entrances and exits, to hand wash, which is another important public health consideration. Certainly, there are exemptions in the bylaw and they're all related to things that one would understand, young children, for medical conditions or disabilities, et cetera. And in activities that are wearing a mask, for instance, a lifeguard, it's just not practical. So, we recognize that and the bylaw creates those exemptions. As well as understanding in some workplaces, for instance, the city, as we prepare for reopening, we're putting plexiglass barriers at some of our public counters, et cetera. So, that'll be, that'll take care of some of those. So, those are exemptions. So, those staff that are behind those very defined areas will not have to wear masks in the performance of their duties. Now, I'm on to slide 11. So, as we had mentioned and as often we had talked, when the initial provincial orders came in, they were very defined and the enforcement of them and the penalties were very, very defined and had no maneuvering room. And we had, there was a lot of discussion amongst council, amongst the community about how difficult that can be. So, the enforcement approach is certainly want to educate, inform, and gain voluntary compliance. As we've heard, this community has been successful and we want to continue going that path. But a bylaw is not put in place for, you know, reasons other than ensuring things are done. And so, there are enforcement and penalties through tickets if necessary. That will be a last resort. And I'll remind people, even under the provincial orders, of the more than 8,000 complaints that we intervened on, less than 1% ended in penalties. And we'll continue that approach. We think it's very important to just have the tool. But our objective here for bylaw to continue to support our public health objectives and our policy objectives set out here. So, this is a tool that we'll use sparingly and only when required. Service requests for this temporary bylaw will be treated as priority calls for bylaw and regulatory services. So, we'll be juggling a lot of our other responsibilities and a lot of the work that our men and women's bylaw do for other bylaws to certainly focus on this because, again, we don't want to lose sight that this is a world pandemic, this is a public health crisis that we're in, and for us, this becomes our first priority. So, now if we move on to slide 12, please. So, again, the fines are required under a bylaw. We don't pass bylaws just for the fun of it. And so, the tools that we will have, these bylaws, we believe are reasonable. We looked at what currently exists in bylaws across the board, what we do with regards to public safety versus public nuisance, et cetera, what other bylaws do. And we will be applying to the province through the process that we normally do for set fines that would be for individuals and for corporations in the range between $400. When we looked at all our other bylaws, that falls into the area that we think is reasonable. And again, we don't want like $800, one could describe that in the provincial order perhaps as punitive. We need something that would be a disincentive but not punitive. It was talked to earlier by the chair as well, too. This is a temporary bylaw that would take effect immediately if council approves it today and has a sunset clause that ends before the next council meeting, where then council may again extend it if necessary on the obviously, public health objectives and the advice of the medical office itself. And certainly, we would be supporting it with any data of the we have with regards to the enforcement challenges we may have had or successes to inform your decision at that point as to whether you want to continue or not. So, that's the bylaw part of the presentation and I'll turn it back to my colleague, Dr. Etches.
Thank you. The last slide is a thanks back to the community again. It is everyone's actions that have allowed us to keep this virus manageable and it is what will make the difference going into the future. So, I want to thank everyone in Ottawa again, as well as the city specifically. The city of Ottawa partnership with public health has been extraordinary. We see it again when it comes to the mask bylaw, but we see it behind the scenes every day, supporting testing, supporting the human needs that exist. And so, this is important, again, as I mentioned, into the future as we learn to live with COVID. We do our own risk assessments individually to keep our activities lower risk and we support those who may have less advantage. Want to encourage everyone that we can proceed to stage three. We are going to figure this out and learn, you know, to keep each other safe, protect those we love who are at higher risk, our neighbors, people in long-term care homes. And we want to continue doing our part. And so, again, thank you very much.
Great, well, thank you very much, Dr. Etches, Councillor Egli, and General Manager Demonte. So, we're going to deal with the mask bylaw issue. We have an amendment from Councillor Menard. Councillor Menard, would you like to introduce your amendment, please?
Yes, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. There is an amendment that has come forward. I've asked Caitlin to distribute to all of city council after speaking with Councillor Egli about some of the further pieces. So, that should be coming out now. I also forwarded this to Dr. Etches earlier, just so that they were able to see it. I can read that if you'd like.
I think it's on the screen now.
Okay, perfect.
So, do you want to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, so, the motion has been edited from the procedural memo that was sent out yesterday. The motion, what it's doing is reducing the fine, the minimum fine from $40, from $500 to $40. And it is reducing the maximum penalty from $100,000 to $5,000. And the reason this is so important is that many of our residents already on a daily basis with finances. And, you know, a $500 fine as a minimum is a very, very large fine. And so, in this case, we're also looking for the bylaw regulatory services, obviously to... I don't think the, is that the correct motion on the screen? I just want to make sure that's the correct motion.
Why don't you, while we're waiting, you just read out the "therefore be it resolved," councillor?
Okay, just give me one moment. I believe it's been distributed to council now, Mayor. So, therefore be it resolved that section 9.2 of the bylaw containing document wanted this report be amended as follows. Every person convicted of an offense under this bylaw is liable to a minimum fine not exceeding $40 and to a maximum fine not exceeding $5,000 for each day that the offense occurs, according to Subsections 429, 1, 2, and 3 of the Municipal Act 2001. And all such offenses are designated as continuing offenses as provided for in subsection 429.2, paragraph 2 of the Municipal Act. And be it further resolved that a recommendation be added to the report as follows, that Ottawa City Council instruct bylaw and regulatory services to take an educational approach and consider carrying free facial masks to distribute to offenders of the bylaw. We've heard very clearly from bylaw and from the Chair of the Board of Health and Dr. Etches that this is going to be an educational component, that we are trying to take an educational approach. This just reinforces that. It asks bylaw to consider carrying free facial masks to distribute to offenders of the bylaw. And it reduces the minimum fine but still keeps a high maximum of $5,000 a day. And so, I think, given that some people may be in precarious financial position, that this is a new expectation of a behavior change that we're looking to undertake. That obviously Ottawa is very good about, you know, taking these types of instructions from public health and have been fantastic through this pandemic in really flattening that curve. This is one area that I think will assist, particularly for people that are on, you know, have lower income and not able to afford a $500 fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Demonte, could we get your comment because it'll be your colleagues that will be enforcing this? Is this motion something that you would support?
Mayor, staff did not participate in development of the motion. So, a few things that were not supportive. First, I understand the objective of the notion of, you know, not wanting to have hardship. And I think that was clearly heard when we had the $800 fine, that we had no maneuvering room under the Emergency Management Act. However, based on the analysis that staff did, and that's why the recommendation before you is a $200 fine for individuals, a $400 fine for corporations would be the set fine that we would intervene. We feel that that falls into the bucket of what other bylaws that we have, et cetera. So, we think it's reasonable. $40, while I understand what the objective is, it really creates an environment where I think we lack the overall understanding of what the objective is here. We are in a public health crisis and it is important for the few fines that we will... And I reiterate, you know, we're 8,000-plus call that we did, less than 1%, even on the $800 fine we're given. For a bylaw officer to issue a $40 fine, it's certainly not in any way a disincentive. When we look at other fines of the city, whether it's animal control, vehicle for noise, vehicle for hire, other noise, they're all in that ballpark figure. And as a matter of fact, the $200 is in the low end. For instance, if, you know, somebody on the public safety side fines such as unlicensed business or vehicle for hire, a dog bite would be $500 versus, you know, if you're not walking your dog on a leash, it's a $100 fine. So, to diminish the importance of the mask and the public health emergency before us, I feel that we think that it should stay at the $200 level. It's what other municipalities seem to be falling on. And the set fine allows us to have that as the tool if really required. So, that's the first comment. The second comment, and I'll leave it to legal, I think, and I know the objective, so it may be a technicality. I believe the, what the councillor citing, in his thing, isn't really about the set fine. It's another section of the bylaw on the Municipal Act. So, I may not meet the objective. And then, the third, again, I'll let legal comment. It is our objective to educate and inform like we've done and will continue to do. We're only going to use the fines in the rare circumstances that are necessary. But with regards to directing the enforcement operations, I don't think that's in the purview of council, but I'll let that. Although, we are proceeding and it's well received. We are proceeding that way. And I think it's important that that's said. And then, finally, when we look at the $200 range again, you know, the rare circumstances that we'll do, if there is a hardship, the judicial system provides for that. So, we've seen incidents where people, and I know they still have to present themselves in a justice of the peace, but they go to a justice of peace. Fines have been reduced significantly or individuals, the fine hardship in front of justice of peace. We've seen situations where they're given two years to pay back the fines in certain circumstances. So, again, I think the also important thing to say is, you know, this will be the typical situation where we'll have perhaps a belligerent individual that's alcoholically induced in a bar that becomes, you know, resistant to any education, et cetera, that we have to then issue a charge. And so, $40, it would not be a disincentive at all. As a matter of fact, if he's double parked outside, his parking ticket would probably be more than the $40 fine for the public health mask not wearing. So, I would not be supportive of this motion, Mayor.
Okay, and Councillor Egli, as Chair of Public Health, could you offer your comment on the motion vis-à-vis the report that you put forward for the mandatory use of masks?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I could preface that with just a couple of quick questions to staff to sort of set the table for the comments? So, Mr. Demonte, I just want some clarification. So, Councillor Menard's motion speaks to $500, you've used $200. Can you explain how that's going to work and what the actual number is if a fine is going to be levied?
Yeah, so, we'll be doing our normal process to apply to Solicitor General through their processes in the courts to get what's called set fines. So, they're predetermined. So, the $200 would be for an individual that would not be wearing a mask and after education in those rare circumstances, we'd have to give a fine. And the $400 would be for an operator, perhaps after several interventions, he doesn't have signage, he or she doesn't have signage, there's no hand wash at the entrance, you know, his staff aren't wearing masks, and we've done several education interventions. So, it would be, the first offense would be a $400 one in that case. That's the range that we would be, if you approve today, we would be applying to the province.
So, there's no intention on bylaw's part, whether you're directed or not directed today, to automatically go to a $500 fine?
Absolutely not, Mayor. It's really clear, this bylaw is designed and its fundamental purpose, I mean, when we put a bylaw in place is because council fundamentally believes we need to set rules. And when we set rules, if they're not respected, there has to be some fine. But we heard clearly that the Emergency Management Act, the $80 fine, which had no maneuvering room, was perhaps a little high and could be considered very problematic for individuals. In discussion, we heard that from councillors and we were talking with our public health colleagues. But at the same time, we are in a public health crisis. It's important that the amount of the fine is a deterrent and is reasonable. And actually, as far as deterrent, as I indicated, you know, a dog bite is $500. And so, that's a public safety thing and we're saying $200 in this case for individuals. So, we feel we've balanced this out appropriately to meet the public health objective that we're trying to achieve.
And Mr. Demonte, last question before I start on my comments. For you, you mentioned there's a number of other cities in the province that have gone this route already. In your scan of those cities, has anybody come in at a fine lower than $200?
No, not that I'm aware of and certainly not in the $40 range. That's not in the model that we're seeing anywhere. I mean, it, you know, and I mean, I want to respect, I understand what the... I mean, it, you know, and I mean, I want to respect, I understand what the councillor's saying, but as I said, there's ways for individuals in hardship. Again, it's going to be very exceptional, but forty dollars is not even not a disincentive. It's actually an encouragement perhaps for somebody to flaunt the law, and as I, you know, it's less than the parking ticket they would get if they're challenging a bylaw officer. So, no.
Thank you, Mr. Demonte. So, Mr. Mayor, it's true that I did have some discussion with councillor Menard starting last evening. That's when I was made aware of this motion going forward. And some changes have been made, and I thank councillor Menard for that. My concern around the forty dollars is, I guess, twofold. Firstly, I believe that what we've seen from our bylaw officers to date under Mr. Chapman and Mr. Demonte's leadership is quite a reasoned approach to dealing with infringements or violations of the provincial order. The idea to get us away from the provincial order and the necessity to levy a fine in the area of eight hundred dollars, which I think everybody agrees would be excessive in these circumstances, was actually brought to my attention by Mr. Demonte to have that discussion and to find a way where we could achieve what Dr. Etches and her Eastern Ontario colleagues set in motion a week or so ago with the public health objective of encouraging the use of masks to give us that added layer protection as we move into phase three. And as I said earlier this morning, have more interactions with people and not only more interactions, but interactions with more people. That this is another way for us to hold on to the progress that we've made as a community. And I really stress as a community, working together. So I firmly believe when Mr. Demonte says that the direction to his staff, through both him and Mr. Chapman, is educate, collaborate, cooperate, and as an absolute last step, if you can't get through to an individual, then move to the enforcement or the fine part of the bylaw. I think that's consistent with what we've seen thus far in the city. And so I believe that on the ground, that's what's going to happen. But I'm equally concerned that you can be fined for anything else in the city, anything else in the city, as mundane or as serious as you want to make it. What was fined in the city on the record, as I understand, now it's fifty dollars. And we're talking about meeting a public health objective, holding back a virus that we all know is still out there, that as well as we have done in the city, has had devastating impacts on some individuals, on some families. It's out there, it's still out there, and we want to get to phase three. We want to get to phase three as a community. And by and large, as all of us have said this morning, the community is with us, whether that's the business community or residents. But there will always be some outliers, unfortunately. And I think in order to achieve our public health objective and balance that against people's financial circumstances, and I don't question councillor Menard's intentions here in that regard, but I think the fine has to be meaningful to send that deterrent. We can't send our bylaw officers in there, in effect, toothless to help us work together to meet this very important public health initiative and objective, which is to hold back the virus. As I say, the virus is still there. We have held it back by good behavior, by cooperating, by collaborating, by following the good advice of Dr. Etches and her team. We need to continue to do that, but as we've seen throughout this, sometimes there are outliers. And while eight hundred is excessive, and that's why Mr. Demonte suggested and Dr. Etches suggested going this route to reduce that, it still has to be meaningful. And if I can get fined for letting my dog be off leash more than for putting my neighbor or family member at risk, to me, that just doesn't make sense. So while, again, I don't question councillor Menard's intentions in this regard, I think at a practical level, we need to have some tools in bylaw's toolbox to be used, again, only in the most extreme circumstances. But it's necessary, as I say, I believe, to meet the public health objective, to have some force and effect behind the fine. And I'm not sure forty dollars does that. I think the two hundred dollar range is much more reasonable, but it still makes a point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. So now, questions and comments either on the bylaw, the motion, or to Dr. Etches and Mr. Demonte. We have a list going here. Councillor Elshantiiri, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Etches and Mr. Demonte, and Chair Eggly for your presentation. I'll speak about the motion after, but my first comment, Dr. Etches and to Mr. Demonte, we talked more about wearing the mask and staff in establishments should not be deputized to enforce the law. I get that message, but there's another message we don't talk about, an individual making those comment to other people who's not wearing a mask, because sometimes, as we heard from you, Dr. Etches, some individual might not be able to wear the mask, and there's no physical view, like they're not on a wheelchair to see, you know. So how would you like the public to talk about or to engage about this if they have to engage?
Thank you, councillor. The point you make is very important, that there are people who are very legitimately exempted from needing to wear or having to wear a mask indoors. We are talking about needing to be compassionate and civil and kind to those who do have that medical exemption, that can't wear a mask for health reasons. There's also, you know, the practical reality that some people need to be able to see someone's lips to be able to better understand the communication, and the bylaw does allow for people to be exempt from wearing masks for these purposes. So I think that is a message that we're sending out through different channels. We're sending that message through social media. We're looking at how to update everybody in the city of Ottawa regarding this bylaw, and we're working through business networks and to reach businesses to help them understand their obligations under the bylaw if it's passed. And that does mean that they don't have to be the enforcers, they don't need the police, and they really must promote an environment where there can be exemptions for the purposes outlined.
Well, first of all, I must congratulate most of the businesses I saw or I visited. They seem to be mostly complying, and also we need them to comply for their own benefit and to keep the business open and functioning. So if there's anything we can do to help more, by all means, but I'd like to make sure the general public also to understand, they're not the bylaw, they're not the police to enforce that. So if they see someone not wearing a mask, maybe they should think of benefit after that, that individual cannot be wearing a mask. So I hope that message will come out as strong as when you ask the businesses not to be the enforcer or the bouncer or somebody with the term. I mean, I would like to see us more on the education piece with the general public. As far as the motion, Mr. Mayor, I will not be supporting the amendment by councillor Menard. We had the experience in the past with, and it's by all means, it's not a comparison to the pandemic, but we saw the taxing and driving when the fine was low. It seems more people took the fine or took the chance to receive a fine. Now with the fine up to a thousand dollar, cheap merit point, we see very little ticket being issued, and you can ask any police in the province or Ontario, and they'll tell you that extreme fine was helpful to return the taxing and driving. So with that, I would not be supporting the amendment, and I will support the motion presented by staff. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, councillor. Councillor Dudas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, councillor Elshantiiri brought up my very point. You know, I am very much in support of having mandatory masks indoors, and I will be supporting the motion, not the amendment. But I did want to bring up that in the past week, I have received messages from parents in the community who have special needs children, one in particular who indicated that their daughter, who has intellectual and sensory special needs, she can't wear a face mask, and her parents can't wear a face mask because it causes her to be upset. And this individual has indicated he's fully in support of our bylaw, he's fully in support of mandatory masks indoors, but he's just asking for that compassion in the community by businesses who are now on the front line of having to, you know, educate about wearing masks. So I'm just, I'm not going to go through what my colleague just mentioned, but I will ask that that messaging, as it goes out, whether it's in social media, whether it's in comments by myself and my colleagues, whether it's in anyone who's speaking to this, we once again reinforce that some people just cannot wear them, and there needs to be compassionate understanding because we're all in this together. So I'll just ask that, that's traded, and I keep your thought in your head, so I appreciate that very much, and I know that my, these parents that reached out to me will appreciate that as well.
Yes, it is important that those who can wear a mask do so to protect those who can't, because it's what adds up to the community-wide protection. So, you know, the individual protection is one thing, but when we grow the percentage of the population that's consistently and correctly wearing a mask, that protects everyone. And so we don't expect 100% compliance. We know not everyone can wear a mask, and we need to have space and understanding and compassion regarding that in our community. And you mentioned the businesses, maybe I just want to say that we did work with the Ottawa Board of Trades, the Ottawa Council of Business Improvement Areas, the Groupement des Jambes Affaires de la Capitale Nationale, and Ottawa Tourism, and they're all interested in providing that protection to their customers, their employees, and doing the right thing so that they can stay open.
And Mayor, if I may add to, we are also on our bylaw team educating the officers, giving them the tools the bylaw provides through these exemptions. And it may seem strange to say, but we want to also be advocates of compassion in the community. So we want to, in situations of consequence where asked to intervene, that'll be first and foremost in the back of our mind as bylaw officers to also get people to understand that there are circumstances that are provided for in the bylaw, but also that we have to be a more compassionate community too, and so we'll also be advocates for that as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor Conseil Cloutier, please.
Merci, Mr. Mayor, et merci, Dr. Etches, Monsieur Demonte, Chair.
Thank you, everyone, for your presentations and comments.
The work that you've done in crafting this bylaw. I have a couple of questions. With respect to the timelines, section ten, subsection two, that this bylaw, there's a sunset clause that will, that will, means that this council needs to renew this bylaw on a periodic basis. Is it the intention, as we go into the fall, that this would be renewed if council meets every two weeks? Would it be every two weeks, or are you envisioning another timeline?
Mayor, certainly because of the summer break, we recognize that this is a kind of a move into an area that has some controversy, and we're changing people's behavior. So it was important that council, as an elected group of officials, represent the community. So we didn't want to have, so that's why the sunset clause for your return. I think I would say, councillor, it will be informed by, after this experience and we see what's going on with the bylaw, and Dr. Etches reports back on what she's observing and what her professional opinion about the success, we'll also provide data of what's happened. That discussion can take place there, and perhaps council can give us direction as to whether they feel we should be coming back every two weeks or every month based on that information. So I would say that the horizon we're looking at is what we have in front of us. We have a summer break. We don't want to make this a bylaw that lasts forever. It's got a sunset. We'll come back to you with some data, some information, some expert opinion from Dr. Etches, and then you can decide whether you extend it. And if you do, maybe we can have that debate then, based on what we've observed, whether it should be every two weeks or every month or whatever other timeline we think is reasonable, or you, rather, you think is reasonable.
Merci, Monsieur Demonte. Let me follow up with Dr. Etches without prejudging how the pandemic will evolve. What are some of the metrics that you would like to see that you would consider with respect to advising council on this bylaw and perhaps the removal of the mandatory mask requirement? Is it zero active cases in Ottawa or the province? Is it hospitalizations? What are some of the metrics that will be important to?
Thank you for your question, and I'm very pleased, I appreciate that city council is considering this subject. I think this democratic way of proceeding is very valuable. It is your representation of the community that is important to add in, you know, to this consideration of how long this bylaw will continue. What I bring to the table is the evidence that this use of masks works to protect from transmission of COVID-19. And what I'm looking at is the number of cases, the number of hospitalizations, the number of outbreaks, the percentage of cases that we can't link back to others that indicates there's community transmission continuing, and the overall burden on our health system as well as our public health capacity to respond. So there's no one measure. We're looking at it in its entirety. We also know that overall, we need to consider other harms to health besides just the infection rate. So how is our community coping? What's happening, you know, related to mask use? What are we seeing that people who need the exemption are getting the exemption properly? You know, these are all things that we'll be looking at over the summer and bring back recommendations to you. I do think that by the end of the summer, it's still probably early to make a final assessment of how well stage three reopening has gone in terms of the impact, and it's before school starts, and we know we need to do all we can to get children back in school five days a week. And so, you know, I could foresee recommending mask use beyond the start of school to enable all the protections to be in place to facilitate that return to school. And then, you know, beyond that, we'll have then that time to assess how all of our practices are making a difference, and I expect, again, that council input to be very valuable as we decide on the next step.
Thank you for that. Couple of other questions. With respect to the responsibilities of businesses that they post signs that there be hand sanitizer, how, there are some wards, mine, where there are no BIAs, how will we be distributing this information to the businesses and making sure that they are aware, those individual business owners, of their responsibilities and the expectations of OPH and the residents of the city?
I can start, Monsieur Demonte, you might have something to add. We have a letter drafted right now, should council support this bylaw, that would go to business owners. So it will outline the obligations, any other aspects that are slightly different from my original instruction, this idea that individual responsibility is being upheld. And so it's a letter to be mailed to businesses as well as posted on our website. So that letter to businesses is an open letter, everyone can read it who wants to see it. We have a very robust support site on COVID for businesses on our website, a lot of tools related to reopening safely, and so that is the place that businesses can go to find out about this bylaw, but about other ways to protect themselves, their business, their employees, and their customers.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Etches. One of the issues that we've seen, that I've seen, is discarded masks, proliferation of discarded masks, some gloves, littering. How could we help our businesses in make sure that residents are well informed as to the proper way of disposing of disposable masks and disposable gloves and assist businesses in passing that message along? We don't want parking lots littered with masks and gloves. If we don't want parking lots littered with masks and gloves because it might be unsafe for other persons, well-meaning to pick them up and to discard them. What can we do with respect to that?
I guess I can take a try. I think it is a communication strategy. I think councillor, you hit it right there. It's a personal responsibility. We shouldn't be doing that and I think part of our communication has to include that, these dispose of them in the appropriate places. And we'll work with the public health team and our public communications team. That is actually something that's extremely important. You're absolutely right. And it'll be part of a communication strategy that we're moving forward.
Thank you. Councillor Dudas, councillor Elschantieri brought it up. An important part of this is for us to promote that not everyone is able to wear a mask. Not all disabilities are visible. We shouldn't judge our neighbors. Have you, has that messaging been effective? Do we see any changing in that messaging? How will we emphasize that civility, that kindness, that understanding of others' particular circumstances which are not necessarily visible to us, to other persons?
I would like to encourage people to share the positive stories. Sometimes we just hear the negatives. And really, you know, I think to share the positive stories, what's working, to demonstrate that this care for one another, that compassion for people who aren't able to wear a mask is the norm. That's what we expect. That is what we want to propagate. You know, when we share the negative stories, they need to be addressed, absolutely. We're trying to avoid that so we can point to the negative stories and say, that's not acceptable. But we also want to encourage the good behavior and recognize people who have made accommodations and demonstrated understanding.
Thank you for that. My final question is with private spaces that are accessible to the public, and I'm talking about apartments and condominiums. Some of, I absolutely support the bylaw and will vote in favor of it. But there are issues with respect to the public spaces in common areas of condos. Are you envisioning any shift to mandate, within your jurisdiction if possible, to mandate the wearing of masks in those environments? Dr. Etches?
We are encouraging that wherever somebody is indoors and can't maintain physically, you know, it's that two-meter distance from others that a mask is used. That's a strong recommendation, but it isn't one that we're looking to make mandatory in apartment buildings where that is not a public space. It is something we're encouraging, you know, owners of buildings, managers of buildings to build into their policies and for individuals to do. Just do it. Wear that mask in the elevator, in the lobby. That role modeling sets a public expectation, an expectation for neighbors. And so, again, you know, that strong recommendation applies in those settings.
Thank you very much. And just as a final note, I won't be supporting councillor Menard's amendment to the bylaw. I think it's been shown that some people find low-cost fines to be part of their freedom. And we see that in the way sometimes people park and they just see parking fines as their permission to park anywhere. And so this is a serious issue that needs some serious backup. And so I absolutely support staff's recommendation. Will not be supporting the amendment, but absolutely supporting the mandatory mask bylaw. And again, I thank you all for your work at OPH.
Merci, councillor Cloutier. Next is councillor Leifer, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I've got a number of questions, so I'll try to keep them fairly brief. The first thing I would do is Dr. Etches and councillor Leglai. The Parkdale Food Centre came out this morning with a press release. I'm not sure exactly what to do with it today, but I do want to pass on that they are very concerned about the treatment of racialized persons in a mask bylaw environment. The potential for people treating racialized persons differently with respect to adherence to the mask. And I'm not speaking particularly to the city's role here, but in the private sector, businesses for example. I would encourage some outreach to that community to just ensure that, you know, we're addressing considerations in a city in which racism is present. Dr. Etches, can I just ask you to unpack a little bit more? I do have some strong pressure in the ward from residents who want a mandatory mask bylaw in the communal areas of multi-residential units. Why are we staying with just a recommendation at this point and not moving into a mandatory order?
So, Tony, did you want to speak to the rationale between, about the approach we've taken?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's putting the thread through a needle and a lot of this was balanced upon, you know, the first step. So we looked at, you know, restaurants, cafes, banquets, other establishments, shopping malls, more the public realm of public buildings, city hall, et cetera. And our objective was, we thought that was, when one enters an area that's controlled, that you need a pass key to get into an apartment or condo building, we're entering another realm. And so it becomes difficult for us to enter that because we don't have access to it, et cetera. So we were very confident that this would be a very good first step. I hear what you're saying councillor, but we thought that at this step it wasn't necessary, necessary rather. And it had many pitfalls if we started to explore that. So we wanted to see how this first step, this very broad step that we're taking, would meet Dr. Etches' public health objectives and the policy objectives we have. And, you know, if it becomes common practice, one would expect that, you know, you just came back from the grocery store, you wore your mask. As you enter the common areas of your apartment building, you also put your mask on. It becomes, so that was the approach. And is it perfect? No, I mean, a lot of this will be something we learn as we go along. And maybe this is some of the debate that we'll be bringing back too after some experience of what we're observing, both on the bylaw side, but on the Dr. Etches' side as well too.
I think I am getting caught in the middle of residents who have very strong feelings about the need for mask rules in their buildings and landlords and condo boards who, for whatever reason, don't want to impose those. Dr. Etches, I like the language that you've used there, that it is a very strong recommendation that people or landlords or condo boards do institute maybe those rules or that people wear those masks. And I think if something was written down, that might help move some of those discussions between residents and particularly their condo boards where, you know, it's residents who are coming up with their own rules for their building. If we could send something out or have something to which we can point to say, it is a strong recommendation that people wear masks in the common areas. There, Dr. Etches, I was interested as well in hearing your discussion about the clustering data, the tracing and clustering data. Now that we're aware that that is there, I know that I'm probably going to receive notes from residents asking for access to that data. Can you talk to me about what the considerations are with respect to making that data publicly available?
Yes, thank you. I will take that back to the team to look at a renewed communications approach with people who run condos or apartment buildings. We'll take a look at that. For the purposes of control of, you know, potential outbreaks or outbreaks in our community, whether it's an institution or a residential address, what we do is we communicate to people who need to know about that situation. And so we always want to respect the privacy of individuals' health information. And we can't be releasing information that identifies people. And yet, sometimes we need to share information to be able to intervene in a certain place. And so, you know, we're sharing information when there's a confirmed outbreak. That information is available on our website. When we get a signal from our cluster detection system, it doesn't mean that it is an outbreak. It's a signal that means it's worth investigating further. These are situations where we don't see a clear link between cases in an area, but we want to explore that further. And so, again, if there is something significant that more people need to know about, then we would release that information to the public. We know that we always have a problem, you actually brought it up earlier, of stigma and people being treated differently based on their, you know, ethnicity or race or income. We just don't need to propagate stigma in our community, discrimination. The virus doesn't affect, you know, it doesn't discriminate on its own. It can affect everybody the same. But because of certain living situations or certain types of work, then we can see greater risk. And so we need to be careful, you know, how we have those conversations.
So what I'm hearing is that the signal data is not necessarily going to be made public until you have something that you can confirm. And part of that is in an effort to reduce stigma, reduce, okay, perfect. That language will be helpful because I know I'll receive notes about it. Just two more items really quickly. I think there are more comments. As Ontario moves into stage three, I'm becoming increasingly less convinced that the construction hours override that was put in place by the province, particularly for small infill projects, is needed. So I will be coming to council to ask whether there is some agreement to start talking to Queen's Park about adjusting that. I certainly understand the need for staggered hours on large building projects. But in small construction projects, I think that premise for the hours override is no longer present. And I will be supporting councillor Menard's amendment. I think, and not to be too provocative, but, you know, we're a group of high-earning professionals. Forty dollars for a significant number of people is a lot of money. It is not an insignificant fine. I've received numerous notes since we began enforcing parking laws again recently from people who are receiving sixty and eighty-dollar fines for whom this is a World War III issue. I do think forty dollars is a really significant disincentive for many people. A four-hundred-dollar fine is an extremely high level of fine for a number of folks who don't have the privilege of our professional salaries. So I'll be supporting councillor Menard's motion. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Brockington, please.
Did you say Brockington?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Dr. Etches, thank you very much. Doctor, help me address some of the questions we've all been getting, dozens if not hundreds of emails the last week or so. First question, why now? If we call the state of emergency back in March, this is a virus spread through respiration, why not mask then? Why are you asking for it now?
So we didn't recommend masks back at the very beginning in this way. We recommended masks for people who were sick, who needed to go out and couldn't stay self-isolated, such as to go get access to healthcare, because we knew that people who are sick could transmit the virus and a mask would keep their respiratory secretions to themselves. Now we're recommending it more broadly to everybody because we know more about asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic cases where there's transmission, especially in those two days before someone becomes sick. We always have to trace back and find out where people have been during that time. And if people are wearing a mask, it's much, much less likely that they've actually exposed somebody. So that's a difference. That's partly why things have changed as well as the ongoing studies, you know, whether it's laboratory studies, modeling, or looking at the experience of other jurisdictions. It's really led to a strong weight of evidence that suggests this is important at a population level. Now, because of those pictures I've shown you from the New York Times about all of the states and their experience that the virus is in our community, whether it's at a high level or a low level, states that have very low levels detected, you see a resurgence when people aren't careful about physical distancing, especially indoor settings. Indoor settings are opening up now in stage three. We didn't have restaurants. We didn't have, you know, movie theaters open. Now we will. And this is going to be a stress, potentially, as it can cause more transmission. We need to keep that limited through the use of masks.
Oh, that's a great answer. Thank you. My concern is if we had done masks in March, our numbers are pretty good in Ottawa now. And we could use that data to justify taking the masks off because our numbers are pretty good now in Ottawa.
I'm very open to reassessing. This is what needs to happen. You know, before council, you need to get the data and take a look at whether it makes sense to continue all of the measures. This is not forever. You saw the different scenarios, I expect, in some of those worst-case scenarios. I think we're into mask use for a longer period. But in the best-case scenario, I think, you know, we can take a look at what needs to be mandatory. I will say, this kind of cultural change to think about protecting others through mask use is probably useful for our flu season as a new norm and habit that does help.
During the transit debate on masks, I said, well, listen, we've had bad flu years. We really should, as a public health service, in the future, recommend mask use because I think we're now prepped when maybe other cultures have been a little more used to it. So to councillor Cloutier's question, people ask, well, what metrics will we use to get out of mask wearing? I just want to stick to keep that at the back of my mind. Will you be recommending mask use in schools this September?
I'm working to try to influence and inform provincial frameworks for the schools to reopen with children in school five days a week. And part of that is looking at all of the different pieces of infection prevention and control we can have in place. First and foremost, is everyone else in the community doing their part to keep the levels low so that there's less likelihood of the virus being introduced into schools? Then we need very strong, robust screening for any mild-mild symptoms in employees, you know, teachers, students, keep the virus out of the schools. And then we need to look at what can be done within the school environment. So wearing a mask is not feasible for younger children. It isn't something I'm recommending. They're exempt in this bylaw. We have to take a look at where the province will land with provincial-wide guidance when it comes to older children. And teachers, you know, there are some certain scenarios where it probably would make sense for teachers who are moving between classrooms to wear masks. So this will be guidance that comes from the Ministry of Education. And I look forward to being able to share that with you when it's available.
Thank you very much for your strong statement last week at the school board. You and Alex Munter for taking a strong position. Thank you for recognizing that there are a lot more issues at play here than just COVID. I think to hear you come out very strongly and make statements about all the other factors that impact a child's physical and mental well-being is very important and I strongly support you. I have a number of friends and constituents who are teachers, who work in schools, who are very concerned about the lack of information. And this is not a criticism of Ottawa Public Health at this time about how they are going to be safe, how children in the schools will be safe and all the different protocols once schools open. So I just wanted to state that. The itinerant testing, which has now started up East End, I think another location was announced. I've asked online and followed up recently. How are the locations for the itinerant testing in Ottawa being determined? There are a number in my ward which I think justify a visit. How is that being coordinated?
Thank you. This testing strategy for COVID in Ottawa is evolving. We've been in a period where we needed to get testing, you know, accessible and now we need to make it sustainable and as effective as possible in terms of finding cases where there may be higher risk. And so it is the Champlain Health Region Instant Command that is responsible for running the testing. That reports into Ontario Health. Ontario Health is the funder and the overseer of the testing strategy in Ontario. And what they have been doing locally is trying to look at how it can work to move testing out into a community. So last weekend, there was a site that they chose, CRIC chose, because there was community support and involvement to be able to test out a method, to see how that worked in terms of bringing, you know, your mobile service, working with the community to promote it. Where public health comes involved in directing where this mobile testing should be available is when we are acting on our cluster detection system. And so the sites that we'll be going out to this week, well, not we, the CRIC people, the Champlain- the Champlain Health Region Instant Command folks who are running the testing, they will be going to places that we have identified based on that cluster detection system deserve a little bit more exploration. And so I expect that system will continue to operate. Further, I do advocate for, in the development of the testing strategy, a way of covering the city across especially lower-income communities where we know the risk is higher. And we are exploring ways we can partner with other agencies to be able to consistently have planned testing, so almost like a surveillance exercise across different communities. So I do expect this will eventually be built in the background. Just to context, the challenge is always the staffing and the capacity and the funding to have people that can do this. So the way the system's operated so far is borrowing hospital workers, surgical nurses, borrowing paramedics who are working after hours and doing overtime. And that is not a sustainable model. And so the CRIQ team is working to create a strategy and access funding in a sustainable way so that we can offer these services in a planned way for the next year plus.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Demonte, the masks on the ground and gloves is a problem in our parks, multi-use pathways, grocery store parking lots. In addition to the signage on these stores that say masks are mandatory, can we also have signage, or you work with these businesses, to have a bin as people exit that says, listen, don't put this on the ground, we've got kids picking it up? This is hazardous material. This is hazardous waste. So I just want to plant that with you. The other question is, are there any businesses like banks? Banks at Halloween say, do not come in wearing a mask. We need to see you when you enter our business. Are they pushing back at all about mask use?
We haven't heard that, and it did come up in our discussion because, as you say, you know, wearing in criminal court provides, you can't cover your face. But I think we're in different times. I think people are evolving, and I think banks as corporate citizens understand that. And so we've not heard anything from any of the banks, but you raise a good question. And certainly, we're willing to listen to them and put processes in place perhaps for them that may need to be put. But as we speak today, there has been no pushback from them whatsoever.
And my last question, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, is Mr. Willis present?
Yes, Counselor, just getting off.
Okay. So, Mr. Willis, just an economic question for you, local economy. Part of Ottawa Tourism's recovery plan this summer was sort of a staycation model, stay in Ottawa if you're in Eastern Ontario, Western Quebec, come to the nation's capital, spend money here. The only national museum I think that is about to open is the National Gallery. They've been very slow to reopen. How are we able to influence, encourage our national museums, which are major draws for tourism, to get open and ready?
I might be able to offer Mr. Willis a comment because I spoke with the President's, Counselor Brockington, of a number of the museums over the course of the last week. Very happy that, I believe it's this weekend, and there's free admission at the National Gallery. The Ottawa Art Gallery opened, of course, it's free admission, open seven days a week. And we've been putting as much pressure as we can on the other big museums because we recognize those are draws to get people even within, you know, Ottawa, to stay in Ottawa, or people close by within the Montreal-Toronto corridor to visit here. So they have some challenges with opening, with union agreements and so on, but they understand the urgency, and we continue to liaise with them to try to get them to open as much of their facility in a safe fashion as possible. So that's the message I relayed on behalf of council.
Thanks very much. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Suds, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my questions have been asked, so I'll take my hand down. I just wanted to ensure that I understood the logic behind the fines as they've been proposed in the bylaw. I think as they've been proposed, it is a deterrent, and that really needs to have the teeth of the bylaw. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the conversation today, for this motion and the work that was done to get us to where we are today. There's no doubt, Dr. Etches, the work that you've done, the Board of Health, the mayor's support, we are seeing the vast majority of people, when I'm out in public, certainly are wearing masks. It's, you know, the number has increased. People understand more and more that it's, you know, about us protecting others. And as a city, I have to say that, you know, I've been pleasantly surprised at just, you know, how, not surprised, but we've seen that as a city, Ottawa really is a city of people who care very much about their neighbors, you know, we tend to follow rules. And as a result, you know, the city has listened to public health. The city has put their trust in Dr. Etches, in her team, in the Board of Health, and the leadership shown by council as we've moved through this pandemic. So, you know, to see this motion come today is good news. From what I hear, it will be supported. I do have a couple of concerns, and, you know, one of them is the cost of the fine, the initial fine. I think that it is too high for many, many people when I'm out. A few people that I have seen over the last couple of weeks without a mask on, at least, you know, seem to be lower-income folks. And I worry that, you know, if somebody's running out to the grocery store, running out to the pharmacy, I saw somebody going into the pharmacy the other day, he didn't have a mask. And I just wonder, how are we doing everything we can to ensure that people have access to masks? Not everyone can afford ten, fifteen, forty dollars sometimes, that's what a cloth mask will cost. What are we doing to ensure that anybody who needs a mask and can't afford it is able to get one provided to them?
Yeah, thank you for your opinion. It is the case that if we're asking people to wear masks, they need to have access to masks. And so the Human Needs Task Force has been a primary vehicle to be able to get masks out through agencies that serve people who have lower income or who are isolated. The United Way of Eastern Ontario's Facing Forward campaign is a source of masks that can be provided for free. It is a campaign that enables businesses and others to purchase masks from the United Way, and then some of that proceeds goes towards providing masks to others. This is in the early days of distribution, you know, it is an important support to the community. And also through partnerships there, the United Way has had significant donors make some donations of disposable masks as well, you know, over a hundred thousand. And so it is making sure that we get those out to individuals. We know that there are service agencies who serve people with lower income that are providing masks when people appear for service. We're not expecting everyone to have one, and so there's a way for us to be able to support people that way. You know, as a last resort, of course, face covering counts. So if somebody has a T-shirt and they can create two layers and cover their nose and mouth securely, then that also is acceptable. We need to be clear about that, and it is written into the bylaw. So we're not expecting everyone to have an expensive cloth mask. The disposable fine and their distribution system will just grow in strength, I think, so that that network includes people like the Ottawa Aboriginal Coalition and others that can really make sure that we get things out into the streets, too.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, and I hope that is, you know, time moves on, certainly what you're pointing out, you know, that distribution does widen. Going back to the fine, Mr. Demonte, it was noted that you use as an example, you know, somebody maybe in a bar, you know, won't comply, what do we do? Forty dollars isn't enough. But my understanding is that if you're in a bar, once you go in and you start to eat or drink, you take off your mask. Is that correct?
That's correct, when you're sitting down. So again, as we've been discussing, there's judgment, there's, but the example I was giving to perhaps give a bit of an image of a difficult client was in a bar where somebody's now standing up, not sitting down, not eating, roaming around, not wearing a mask. Or it could be in any other situation where somebody becomes, and unfortunately, that's part of our reality, and it's a small minority, really belligerent and non-cooperative and is flooding all the rules. So that's where we want to ensure that our bylaw officers have the tools they need to intervene in those cases.
So the bylaws that's written today, no matter where you're at, what the circumstances are, if it's a grocery store and it's someone who is obviously quite low income, that is your minimum first fine. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're applying to the province, that would be the minimum fine for an individual. And just to ensure for Counsel Lieber, you mentioned the four hundred. So if it's an individual, it would be two hundred. The four hundred is for the operator, not the individual. Now, still a large delta from the forty dollars. I respect that. So, yes, that would be the thing. But again, I want to reiterate, and we've been clear, and, you know, this is from somebody that, one of the for-for, my responsibility is bylaw, it's an enforcement agency, right? Where the arm work is often the bad guys, right? So, but our objective is not that. Our objective would be that, and I think there was an example just recently, and somebody, I think you mentioned it, somebody running in and forgetting their thing, and the bylaw officer happens to be there or gets called, we would not confront them, do a, hey, where's your...
Oops, sorry, Tony, there's a phone ringing. Tony, we can't hear you.
Because of physical difficulties, we are unable to reach your call. Please try your call again. It's a recording. Six-one-three-four.
Tony, just hold for a second. Sorry, Tony, I don't think Tony Demonte is hearing us. Okay, just hold for a second, everyone. Catherine?
Everywhere I go, I see people texting and driving. I think that what happens is we end up penalizing lower-income communities that are also often overpoliced, and we know that that happens. So they're overpoliced, they're overfined, and two hundred dollars can put somebody into a state of poverty, could mean that they are not able to see their children that month. It means that they're not able to make their rent, or they have this fine held over them. So, you know, I've got to say, I, you know, strongly support Counsel Menard's motion. I think that, you know, forty dollars for a first fine, it will go up after that, is fair, it's equitable, it creates equity across the city. Some people can easily afford two hundred. Many, many, many people cannot. And so for those folks, we have to watch out for them. We have to ensure that we're not going to cause undue harm in parts of our city, again, that are already overpoliced and already overenforced and low income. So I would encourage my colleagues to accept the amendment, to start the fines at forty dollars, and allow them to go up if, in fact, the infractions continue to occur with that person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Sorry, Mayor, if I may just add, I think we have learned from the experience of, you mentioned Counsel McKenney, the different needs that people have in lower-income communities. And I expect that, you know, that will be reflected in how the enforcement's approached, and also how we communicate out about it. So we know that we need to reach people in different languages. We know we need to communicate through different networks, you know, and make sure people understand the rationale and the requirement, as well as where to access masks for free if needed. And so this is part of the communication plan to support this bylaw, should it be addressed.
Okay, Counselor Kavanaugh, please. Okay, we'll go to Counsel Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Etches, I wanted to echo what Counsel Brockington said earlier, thanking you for the presentation that you made to the school board last week. I also just want to get some more clarity because I'm still not sure what role Ottawa Public Health has in advising or consulting with the four school boards in Ottawa. Is there a formal role, or is it informal? Or how are you providing advice to the school boards?
Ottawa Public Health, I would say, is a support, an advisor to school boards. So the direction to school boards about how they will operate comes from the Ministry of Education in terms of the requirements. What we do similarly, we have public health guidance that's coming from the province. We work on the ground locally to help school boards and individual schools apply that guidance and address any particular situations that might be important for infection prevention and control. So we will be helping, you know, advise on processes for screening, on making sure the communications products make sense if there is an outbreak that needs to be addressed, as well as doing that follow-up within schools. I would say, we also are advising schools on how to support mental health of children and youth and employees, staff, as we go into the fall. So public health has a role with schools that is legislated under the Ontario Public Health standards. There are programs in schools that we are supposed to provide. Immunization is one that unfortunately we weren't able to complete in the spring. We have to revisit some of these standard public health programs. But given the context and the situation, our work to support mental health, resiliency, early detection of more significant challenges, and linking people to care is also something that we're focused on.
Okay, thank you. I mean, strictly speaking, well, obviously, school boards are well outside of municipal jurisdiction, but as a city council, we do have the economic health of the city top of mind. And I think it's worth emphasizing again how important it is to be able to have economic recovery, to have parents able to get back to work full-time, and having kids back in school is a big part of that. So thank you, Dr. Etches and your team, for continuing to work with the school boards there. I wanted to just switch over to Counselor Menard's motion. It's interesting the way that the bylaw is drafted right now, which is every person who is convicted of an offense under this bylaw is liable to a minimum fine not exceeding five hundred dollars, which I think is maybe causing some of the confusion around here. And Mr. Demonte has shared that the intention is a first fine would be two hundred dollars for an individual. But the way I read that wording is there could be quite a bit of discretion anywhere from, you know... from, you know, one dollar up to five hundred dollars for a minimum fine. I'm actually very sympathetic with the issues that Counsel Menard and Counsel McKenney have raised, and Counsel Leifer spoke to it earlier. It's almost hard to believe, when Counsel McKenney, just a few minutes ago, was sharing how there are people in our community who considered a financial hardship just to purchase or acquire a mask. I have a hard time believing that, but I do believe it, because we're hearing it from agencies like The United Way and other community groups. And it's really hard to have a perspective, I think, of, you know, someone like myself, a city councillor, living in a community like Stittsville, it's hard to really have, understand and have the perspective of the financial hardship that many people in our city are facing. And I think Counsel Menard's motion is actually important from a symbolic point of view, to recognize that, in terms of how we're setting these fines. I think it's important. I want to suggest a friendly amendment to Counsel Menard. I'm more concerned about the upside. I like what you've done with the motion on that, the low side, on the forty dollars, but I think we should keep up with that hundred thousand dollars per day that's in the original bylaw. So I'm going to suggest a friendly amendment to Counsel Menard to just take out the five thousand dollar a day maximum, and return to the hundred thousand dollar a day, as it's written in the original bylaw that we're considering today.
Counsel Menard, is that a friendly motion?
Yeah, I think that addresses, I think that addresses the, you know, businesses that may not be complying in this, that for several days in a row, that would address this. And then I believe bylaw still has the ability to, you know, fine in greater amounts if it's warranted. And so, yes, that's a friendly amendment, I think that would do it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, Counsel Gower?
Well, thank you, Counsel Mayor. I think it is important, because that upper limit doesn't really affect individuals, you know, so it's targeting the right things there. So I'm going to support your motion with that friendly amendment, and I hope other councillors will consider it as well. I think it's important. Symbolic direction, more than anything, to our staff and to the community about where our priorities should be in terms of lower-income individuals in Ottawa. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Doctor, for the presentation, and I'm very happy to hear that we're thinking ahead about way two. I think that is what's in everyone's mind right now. I also did want to give a big thank you to the mayor, myself, Counselor King, Counselor Egli, and yourself. We all got to check out the Honey Mobile Unit, that it was run by the Ottawa Hospital. Really great feedback, people said the test times were very, very quick. And in the East End, we appreciate it as eastern councillors, to see a test facility like that. Unfortunately, I think some of the downsides of the Ottawa Hospital is, I've been trying to find out what those numbers were, of how many tests actually took place, and I don't think we even know that number still yet. So do we have those numbers yet? And also, how, I think there's a real push, I've seen a lot of people on social media really wanting to see this test center, and I know you're doing it based on cluster, but is there any way that Ottawa Public Health can get involved? Because it's really not us, and that's a challenge we're facing. But let's face it, you've been the face for the city of Ottawa and all our success, so I'd like to see us more involved with those kind of programs in the community.
Okay, so starting with your first question about how many people were tested, what was it like, how did it compare, say, to the assessment center approach? I don't have, like, I may be slightly off, but my understanding, it was about a hundred and twenty people were tested in about three hours. And I think that efficiency is about half as efficient as the numbers that could be seen with the same number of staff in an assessment center. So the assessment center can put people through higher volume faster, if there's no, you know, we're not counting the wait time, just the actual service itself. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have this kind of approach. So I think earlier I spoke to, we're evolving, informing the health system's approach to testing, so that we have both options. Assessment centers without the long wait time, and mobile services that can be across the city in a planned way, as well as deployed to potential clusters. We're on that path, we will see this continue to evolve. So when it comes to the city's interest in running testing, I think that is a more complex conversation, I'm not sure this is the best venue. In terms of Ottawa Public Health right now, I just want to share, you know, to inform that thinking, we are still operating in an emergency response mode, with many, many staff redeployed from services that also need to be started up again. I mentioned the immunization work and others, you know, inspections. So we do not have people or capacity to spare to run testing ourselves. We also traditionally are not providing that kind of one-on-one clinical intervention. So it is appropriately run by healthcare, but there may be a role, you know, potentially if there was an interest on the part of city council to support, you know, we could explore that with the Champlain Health Region Institute Command.
Thank you very much for that. And I understand there's, you know, many different arms in that, but I definitely see the need, and, you know, all the people that were actually at that one, a majority of them had transit-related issues, and that's why they were actually getting tested. There was no way they were going out to Brewer, it just wasn't going to happen. And Raulson and I witnessed that ourselves, and talked to people in line with distancing in our masks, and they were really appreciative. And a lot more people, as soon as I posted on Facebook, everyone's asking when the next one is. So if you can look at that, I know we don't have another councillor for quite a while, if this is something that can be done outside of the Council Mandi, just to coordinate better with them and try to get more East End mobile tests, that would be fabulous. I'll move along, because, you know, it's going to be a very long day today. First of all, Counsel Luloff and I were kind of chatting, and this is on the, this is more on the Tony's front, I guess. What's the level of, what's the threshold going to be for operators? Will it be education for the first time? You know, are they having people at the door, asking all the appropriate questions, the hand sanitizer? Are they really going to, say, come in punitive and give a fine right out of the gate? Or are they going to go, hey, business, you've made these mistakes, can you clear this up for next time? Just that we can follow up on that super quick.
Mayor, the bylaw offices and standing operating guidelines are being developed to, as we've indicated clearly several times, education, information, that approach, that includes individuals and the operators. Obviously, every bylaw officer has discretion, and that's an important part of their job, but directly to your question, Counsel, is, no, the approach is going to be arriving and asking the questions, why is your sign not up? Oh, it got ripped out, or whatever, that type of approach. So absolutely, that's where we want to go.
Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that. Business has been struggling like crazy, so I'm going to giddy up here. I had one more quick question. A lot of people, I've seen it, you know, a few kids at the grocery store, they want to get some chips and dip, and they forget their mask. Oh, you know what, I have a condition, I have to go in there. Obviously, those are the situations we try to avoid. But then there's also the people that actually do have healthcare issues, that can't wear a mask. They're, without putting a scarlet A on them, is there anything that the province is looking at doing, maybe something principal? Obviously, you don't have to get a medical note for it, but if people are taking the time to print something and put it on themselves, maybe they don't identify themselves, but some actually do. Some people don't like the stares. Is there any badge or button kind of system that people are thinking about to be able to help, you know, seniors that actually, certain ones that can't wear those masks? That's directed to the doctor.
Yeah, I'll...
I'm not aware of any provincial action on that front.
Yeah, maybe they give a thought. And just, I'll wrap up here. The playgrounds, I think a lot of people are quite excited for Friday. I just want to thank Dan Chenye, he's been changing gears every five minutes, and I know they're getting out there and taking down a lot of those signs for Friday's playground use for parents. In regards to the Menard motion, while I really appreciate a lot of it, I guess, I see what happens with even hookah, and hookah bars, where people are literally crumbling up tickets and throwing it in the officer's face. So I can only imagine what would happen if we lasted too low of a limit, but I do appreciate the two hundred versus the five hundred, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Menard, we'll put you at the end to wrap up. Counsel Flurry?
My question is for Dr. Ashes and Mr. Demonte. We received several emails questioning the legality about the wearing of the mask. And you've told us what's proposed during your presentation, but will you provide a written answer? There's many social media transmitting the news, but not everybody watches city council, so it would be important for all elected reps to have all the facts behind the decision.
Some emails questioning the evidence that supports wearing masks to protect the population's health. We have received a similar, almost form letter in one case, that quotes Dr. Evans in the Kingston area, among others. You know, I have followed up with Dr. Evans to better understand if this was in context, and, you know, and this is an example of quoting somebody out of context, taking a partial view, a selective approach to looking at the evidence on the effectiveness of masks. And so what we're trying to do is absolutely respond to every email that we receive. So we are responding to each of those emails to provide, you know, the evidence that we're basing our recommendations on, referencing other sources of data, which continues to grow. In my inbox today are two more, you know, peer-reviewed sources that support masks used to protect the public. And we have this information on our website as well, so if people are interested in evidence behind this approach, we have added to our website the list of sources. You know, I do understand, it feels like this is, you know, something where people's freedom is being infringed upon. You know, I want to go back to the majority opinion here, which is that this is a small restriction on our freedom to have a big gain in the kinds of activities we can go about. The access we have to services and employment is a very important freedom to maintain, and this small infringement is, you know, in terms of legality, it is within the realm of what is allowed, because it is for the protection of the public.
Would it be possible for you at the city to share with city council members this information in a general email? I understand it has to be general and not specific, but, so that we have this information, that would be appreciated. Now, I'm a little confused with the motion, because it is proposing a certain flexibilities of amount. I mean, if we talk about a group that could be marginalized, Mr. Demonte, if we present a motion like the Menard motion, we have this flexibility according, based on the behavior or the seriousness of the violation? I didn't have the opportunity to give you additional information after Counsel McKenney's intervention. We have no elements to prove that. We went from Stittsville to Cumberland, and I'm sure that Mrs. McKenney has some individual stories, but out of the eight thousand intervention we did, there was less than one percent I don't have any data on the capacity of paying, unfortunately, but what the councillor is proposing here is that we're asking the province to have fixed fees for the penalties. We're proposing two hundred dollars for an individual and four hundred dollars for a business. We believe it's in the normal range. Usually, it would be three hundred and twenty dollars for dogs with a leech, it's around two hundred dollars. So, but usually, it's always to maintain the public safety. We don't support the forty dollars, because practically speaking, on the ground, it's not even worth it, because with this type of fee, you have to go to court, and the court, the judge would have to establish the price. And he'll probably, the judge will probably look at what the province does, and then the judge will say it will be around eight hundred dollars. So forty dollars is not even like a parking fine. Parking fine, the lowest parking fine is forty-five dollars. So if the goal is to educate and inform, well, you know, at this rate, very few tickets would be given, because here we want to find people that do not want to comply with our objectives of public safety. So asking an officer to intervene and to give a fine, even police officers, of forty dollars, it would have absolutely no impact. I understand that we say that forty dollars for some people, it's major, yes, but for most people, it won't be. And I repeat, even with the two hundred dollars, if you go to court, a judge, if necessary, can give a ticket of up to five thousand dollars, even if council says it has to be limited to a maximum. With fixed amounts, usually it's automatic, and even if people can't pay, there is a judicial process where a judge can accept the reason and adjust the price in accordance. Recently, if we look at what was done elsewhere, in Hamilton, it's five hundred dollars. Okay...
Counsel Flurry?
Yes, I'd like to specify two things, to see what Dr. Etches thinks. We can feel some opening here, we saw it, we know that people are coming out more, and I'd like to know what we can do for our businesses that have to defend themselves. You know, we talked about the signs earlier, many have the hand sanitizers at the door, but there seemed to be confusion with the global message at the time of reopening. So what are you thinking about that? Well, during phase two, of course, we realized there are businesses that have many questions, because there were a lot of details lacking in the provincial material.
The business toolkit that was created with the city and public health is one support that we continue to add to our website. So we're trying to provide businesses with the basic tools, the signage, right now, for example, regarding the requirement of masks indoors. But we have many other supports and documents, you know, how to prevent an outbreak in your setting, how to do screening of your staff, and making sure, there's a lot of understanding that physical distancing indoors is still required. So we have a team dedicated to this work. So we have a team dedicated to this work of not just responding to the questions that come in, but anticipating the questions and putting up material and resources on our website to add to the provincial guidance. Not sure if that answers your question.
Absolutely. And some businesses who aren't part of the phase three are coming up to us and asking for exemptions and so on and so forth. Just a reminder that those are provincial and we encourage them to contact their MPP, but certainly it shouldn't be a political decision.
No, locally, we cannot change that. You're correct. We have to follow the provincial order.
Good. And I too want to echo, I believe, that Premier Ford's statement yesterday on all schools should go to five days a week is based on Dr. Etches's statement earlier in the week at the school board. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Great, thank you. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you, Ben, thank you. I was cut off earlier. Connection isn't great, I guess. First of all, thank you very much for speaking out at the school board. Very much appreciate it. As a former trustee, I know that they appreciated it very much. In terms of those who can't wear masks, I'm getting a lot of concern of those people who absolutely can't wear masks and are feeling they're going to be bullied. Bullying is something I'm worried about quite a bit, and I'm wondering if we can come up with a system like a lanyard. Maybe the province should be doing this, but maybe we can take some initiative of something because people do have medical notes, they have reasons they can't wear it. I have some cases where it's an employee who can't wear it, who works as an essential worker, and, you know, they have the plexiglass in front of them, and they're very, very worried about how they're being treated. So some kind of badge or something, as councillor Tierney was mentioning, I was going to say the same thing. I feel very strongly that there's something needed there to identify people, just like, you know, a handicap parking spot, people have the special plates in their window. Somebody could have something like a lanyard with a card on it and with the they get from their doctor.
So I appreciate the desire to really support people who need the exemption to feel comfortable, you know, indicating that they are not able to wear masks for various reasons. We actually want to make it even easier than that, right? So we're not asking for proof. People do not need to have a medical note. I mean, that would be a huge burden to ask people to try to get a medical note. Not good for the healthcare system either. And even a lanyard, you know, we don't want it to be that complicated. We don't want people to have to figure out where to go to get some marker indicator that they can be exempt. You are exempt if you express that you have a medical need or a health reason, you know, and that is the kind of ease which we want to promote, you know, for businesses to simply ask, you know, and remind and educate that masks are now required in indoor spaces, you know, and then for someone to say, well, I have an exemption. Okay, you know, carry on. So we need to, again, foster that, that there is no barrier for people who need to access services. So I think this will be part of how we communicate to businesses for sure, you know, getting that message across, there's no proof needed, nothing at all.
It's so different from like not, you know, everyone not being allowed in the park or whatever because they're alone in doing something sort of against the trend. So I sure hope that bullying does not end up being a problem, so that's my concern. And in terms of apartment buildings, I get a lot of concerns because I have many, many seniors in apartment buildings, and it would be really great to have some kind of guidelines, perhaps just something like a poster that we make that says, "Wear a mask in an elevator", something along that line, to just push the message, even if we're not treating it the same way as a store, something along that line, because I get a lot of concern from people who do not go out very much but must use an elevator just to get to the laundry room or whatever.
Councillor, we do have elevator etiquette posters available, and I will follow up on these recommendations that we do further communication to apartment and condo owners to promote the resources that they can post, as well as creation of policies if they don't exist.
Yes, well, with the new level of the mask, I think that's really important, it's not just staying apart. Oh, thank you very much. In mobile testing, I encourage more of it. I know we're stretched for resources, but that has been very helpful. And I know that in an area like mine where people can't get out to DA Moody's School, that's too far, they can't, you know, not great bus service, they just don't have access. So I highly encourage that we do that for areas, especially social housing. That would be a big bonus because otherwise testing is going to be, there will be more people who can afford to drive out to these places that will get tested rather than those who can't, and that's a concern of mine. In terms of the fine and the amendment proposed, what is currently the lowest fine that is on the books for a general, for general, this is a question for Mr. Demonte, for general misdemeanors? What is the current lowest one, lowest level?
Sorry, your question?
Mr. Demonte.
Yeah, he's having computer trouble, I believe. Mr. Demonte, are you there now? Yeah, he had to reboot his computer, I was told.
Mr. Mayor, I can help with this. The answer is $50.
Yeah. What if that was the, would it be helpful to amend the motion to $50 so that it's in line with the rest of what fines are in, would that be a friendly amendment of what's on the books now?
Councillor Menard?
Yes, yes, that would be friendly.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, councillor Kavanaugh?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, so to wrap up on his motion or amendment, councillor Menard?
Thanks, Mayor. Just have a couple of questions and I'll wrap up. So right now, the way the bylaw is written, we have it, that bylaw has discretion from $0 up to $500 as the minimum. Is that correct?
So are you asking Mr. Demonte?
I'm asking whoever can answer the question.
Yeah, I think, is Anthony back online now? David White, can you answer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What's proposed, as outlined, is that once the bylaw is passed, staff will apply in the ordinary course, what's called a set fine. That application is made through the solicitor general, ultimately the court decides what that set fine will be. So it's, that's the amount that appears on a ticket that's issued. So there isn't the discretion of the officer, so to speak, at the, you know, at the point of laying a charge as to what the fine will be. It would be set fine, whatever that happens to be.
Okay, that's helpful. And so, you know, you could set the fine at $50 as a municipality, and then if there's continual, you know, going into the bylaw, it would be a day-by-day penalty that increases up to a maximum of, well, for businesses, it's $100,000?
Yeah, the bylaw, as Frank contemplates that it is a continued offense, there may be further fines, of course, that's, just from an enforcement practical standpoint, that may be possible with respect to a business or an organization. Obviously, unlike traffic tickets, there's no repository of previous charges. So in a sense of an individual, someone being able to determine that it's a second or third or fourth offense, there simply isn't a way for the enforcement staff to know that when confronted, when dealing with that situation.
That makes sense. And this is partly why, you know, I brought this forward at this time, is we have that discretion now, and we've seen instances where this would be helpful for folks who require it. Right now, in other cities that have introduced this, there are some that they have mandatory masks without fines, similar to what we did on OC Transpo with very good compliance. You know, in other jurisdictions, we've seen the fine would be set for 50 for a first offense, escalate from there to 150, then $300. We've heard examples of, you know, vaping, that sort of thing. This is different. This is a mandatory behavior we are instituting, not offering somebody a choice to make. We're instituting this policy. We've been in this situation before, and it resulted in park ambassadors, and that was a good educational idea from councillor Meehan. I've spoken with, my office has talked with members of Cowie, and they've talked about being over policed on the parks enforcement, in particular with respect to social housing. There is ambiguity right now in the discretion on enforcement, and it makes marginalized people vulnerable to somewhat arbitrary fines. And so we need to push for clear guidelines on when the city uses fines, how to de-escalate conversations between bylaw and community. And we've also heard that our main objective here is education. That's what I've heard all those members of Public Health say, that's our first objective, and I agree with that. If somebody is violating this bylaw over and over again, there is opportunity there for stiffer penalties. But let's not disadvantage people that are already disadvantaged with a large ticket with a behavior change that we're instituting across the city. And so now with the Gower amendment, friendly amendment, and the Kavanaugh friendly amendment, I hope that members of councillors have, some councillors have changed their mind on this, that this is a good policy to implement, and that we should be making sure we're not burdening those who are already vulnerable, who do not have that type of money if they say forgot their mask, or as we've seen with the way parks were policed, it's situations where we're getting stories in the media headlines on this about the $800 fines for areas that potentially we shouldn't have seen that. So I don't want to get into a situation like that again here. So let's pass this amendment and pass the bylaw as a whole. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, everyone. Let me thank Dr. Etches and councillor Egley again, Tony Demonte and his staff. They've been under tremendous pressure, obviously, over the last several months and have worked very diligently to ensure the safety and well-being of all of our citizens. I would strongly urge you not to support this amendment. We have a very good report that was co-authored by Dr. Etches and her team, along with bylaw. They are the professionals in this field, and the notion that we want to lower the fine level in the midst of the worst health pandemic in 100 years just does not make any sense. And whether you're rich or you're poor, the lesson and the message is, if you don't want to get fined, wear a mask. You know, we had the same argument when we launched the speed cameras. You know, you get people calling you and emailing you and tweeting you, this is outrageous, it's a cash grab, on and on. Well, if you're not speeding in those zones, nothing to worry about. And if you wear a mask, as we ask everyone to do, regardless of their status or their social, their financial means, we're doing it because we want to continue the good work that we've built up over the last four months to ensure that individuals are protected. And there are many examples, I gave many examples in my opening remarks, of where those people who are economically challenged can get a free mask. United Way, Human Needs Task Force, Social Service Offices, Public Health. So there are opportunities, and I think it sends a very strange signal that we equate this pandemic at the same level as a parking infraction. Folks, this is a serious health situation, and for us to simply, because one group of people, some activists came and said, "We don't want a high five, high fine," makes no sense at all. We have to lead, not pander, and we have to make sure that we have the tools in place that we give our health inspectors and give our bylaw officers, the tools to ensure that they have the means to charge someone. Their first action will not be to charge, as they have done and shown time and time again, is to educate, to encourage people. But at some point, you need to have that leverage, namely with a significant fine, to encourage people to play safely. So we have a report done by Dr. Etches and Public Health, plus bylaw, been forwarded at our request, and that of the province, and I'd urge you to reject the amendment that makes it easier for people to go out and flaunt the law, and support the professional report that's been put before us. So on the Menard motion, yays and nays, please.
Councillor Moffett? Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Sudds? Councillor DeRusse? Conseil Coucher?
No.
Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Elshantiri?
No.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney? Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury? Councillor Meehan? Councillor Brockington? Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley? Councillor Deans? Mayor Watson?
No.
Eight yays, 14 nays.
Okay, so on the report is presented, carried?
Mayor, I just have some questions. Just have some questions, Mayor, on your
Lanark County op are investigating a homicide in the Carlton Place area. The suspect is at large and is armed. Police are requesting the public avoid the suspect, Shane Sabourin. He is described as a male, 30 years old, white, 5'7", 199 pounds with black hair and blue eyes. He was last seen wearing a black long-sleeved shirt and pants walking along Highway 7 near McNeely Avenue in Carlton Place. Please call 911 if you have any knowledge of the male's whereabouts. O P P du Comté de la Narque enquête sur un homicide dans la région de Carlton Place. Le suspect court toujours et il est armé. La police demande au public d'éviter le suspect, Shane Sabourin. Il est décrit comme étant de sexe masculin, 31, teint blanc, 5 pieds, 7 pouces, 199 livres, cheveux noirs, oreilles bleues. La dernière fois qu'il a été vu, il portait une chemise noire à manches longues et un pantalon et marchait sur autoroute 7 près de avenue McNeely à Carlton Place. Veuillez appeler 911 si vous savez où se trouve cet homme.
That the rule of procedure be suspended to receive an update in camera regarding the investigation of a complaint against councillor Shirelli pursuant to the city's violence and harassment in the workplace policy, and that the Occupational Health and Safety Act at today's meeting, that council may receive this information at the same meeting, it considers the integrity commissioner's report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Shirelli. And in accordance with the procedure bylaw being bylaw number 2019-8, city council resolved in camera pursuant to subsection 13-1B, B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including staff, 13-1E, litigation, potential litigation affecting the city, and 13-1F, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, to receive an update regarding the investigation of a complaint against councillor Shirelli pursuant to the city's violence and harassment in the workplace policy and the occupational
Lanark County op are investigating a homicide in the Carlton Place area. The suspect is at large and is armed. Police are requesting the public avoid the suspect, Shane Sabourin. He is described as a male, 30 years old, white, 5'7", 199 pounds with black hair and blue eyes. He was last seen wearing a black long-sleeved shirt and pants walking along Highway 7 near McNeely Avenue in Carlton Place. Please call 911 if you have any knowledge of the male's whereabouts. O P P du Comté de la Narque enquête sur un homicide dans la région de Carlton Place. Le suspect court Le suspect court toujours et il est armé. La police demande au public d'éviter le suspect, Shane Sabourin. Il est décrit comme étant de sexe masculin, 31, teint blanc, 5 pieds 7 pouces, 199 livres, cheveux noirs oreilles bleus. La dernière fois qu'il a été vu, il portait une chemise noire à manches longues et un pantalon et marchait sur autoroute 7 près de avenue McNeely à Carlton Place. Veuillez appeler 911 si vous savez où se trouve cet homme.